The meeting of the City of Kerrville City Council is hereby called to order on Tuesday, July 3, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. Item number two on the agenda is the ordinance's third and final reading. Two A, an ordinance repealing and replacing the city's signed regulation found in Article Two of Chapter Six of the city's Code of Ordinances and repealing Section 27 of ordinance number eighty-five dash fifty-nine and all ordinances which amended Section 27 and pertain to the regulation of signs, adopting new regulations concerning the installation and maintenance of signs within the City of Kerrville, Texas, and within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings of several penalty clause, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject.
Morning, Mayor.
What we did was, or what I did after your last meeting was make the changes that you all talked about specifically to flags and to electronic signage. And so those changes are reflected both in the draft that you were sent and then I think in the draft that Brenda handed out in our at-your-places this morning. That's really all I have to say, other than we noticed, thanks to Mr. Kessler, that there was a discrepancy in that when we talked about the revisions to balloons, that we took out one of the prohibited signs would be inflatable signs. And so I've added that back in for now. And so you know, I got a couple feedback from a couple of y'all separately about, no, you wanted that type of device, that type of figure to be prohibited and listed within the prohibited signs. That said, I think if you do that, I think you need to further define balloons to be some size. And this morning, very quickly, I kind of looked at four or five other sign codes of other cities, and it seems like a one-foot-in-diameter balloon is the standard, I mean, that's the balloon.
The largest.
The largest that I saw, so that you can have, you know, the balloons on cars or however, you know, birthday celebrations or some sort of-
Typical balloons.
Typical balloons outside of a shop to say, hey, we're having something special. So that's really all I have for you this morning. And other than that, once, if you adopt it on this third reading, then I will, of course, make a clean draft and present that to the Code of Ordinance publishers, and that'll be published probably within the next, it'll be online within probably a month, and then published within probably a quarter, three or four months.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Council?
I've been approached by a couple of folks, and I know we've probably beaten this dead horse continually, on the maximum allowable signage for electronic sign boards. There were a few folks that still thought that thirty-two square feet wasn't enough for a sign that was greater than a hundred square feet. I suggested that maybe we could go up to forty-eight square feet as a compromise. I'm just bringing that up. I don't know if y'all have any appetite to continue that discussion or not. If not, I'm willing to let it go, and we can revisit it if it comes up later.
I'd really stay with the thirty-two feet, as we discussed in the last meeting.
Okay.
And I think, Mike, the, I appreciate Mr. Kessler catching the contradiction on the balloons. I don't know, speaking for the rest of council myself, it seemed always clear that that was the intent of the ordinance was to inflatable, inflatable signs, inflatable balloons, that type of thing was prohibited, along with the other items that were prohibited in that lengthy list, and that balloons would be allowed. So I think that's a good clarification.
So for clarification, it's, we'll put a one, a twelve-inch diameter maximum balloon size?
Yes, and I think you need to make that part of your motion, because that'll be a change, but I don't think that necessitates any additional readings. It's just a further depth, you know, defining-
Further clarification.
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I think I'm in good shape to adopt it.
Well, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the signage ordinance upon the third reading, clarifying that inflatable signs are prohibited with the exception of balloons to twelve-inch diameter.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Three to zero. Item number three on the agenda is discussion of fiscal year 2013 budget and provide direction to city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have a little PowerPoint coming up here in just one second. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Appreciate that. Again, welcome, a couple new council folks here walking through our budget. What we really want to do this morning is really take a bird's-eye view of where we are with the budget and try to get some additional direction from council. Are we going down the right directions, down the right parameters? The budget's been presented here to you in a straw man form, and again, in its truest definition of straw man, this is a draft piece for discussion purposes. And again, we're trying to gauge to see if we're going the right directions. A lot of the components of what we are looking at are really derived in work that we've done with council over the last two years particularly, and reaffirming a lot of the concepts that we had discussed at the January 31, 2012 budget retreat that we had with council. And I have placed, at your places, the packets that we had from that discussion component. And Mayor and Mr. McDonald, we had provided copies with y'all's packets over the weekend for y'all to take a look at. So if you like, we can go back and refer to any components of those. But they went into really some discussion of sustainability, some definition of sustainability, looked into debt issuance issues, and some parameters for those types of things. And there was some analysis in terms of how Kerrville ranks in what we were looking at to other communities. We had looked at about another twenty-one communities outside of Kerrville from a variety of sources and sizes to get a look. So one of the key things that staff is requesting direction from council on really this morning would be, are we there at the spending thresholds that we need to be at? Some of the key enhancements that I'll highlight here in just a minute are those things that we want to try to tackle and undertake. The debt issuance really is on the utility fund side. We don't have and no contemplation of debt issuance on the general fund at this point, you know, no property tax-supported debt. And then again, the capital improvements planning really is a follow-up to the debt issuance, so it's really kind of linked. And then other, and one of the things that I neglected to put in here, and we hadn't really talked about yet, was hot funds. Normally, we would be in a process, an application process for hot funds, and so just a reaffirmation that we want to hold off. Applications would normally be back in June with some discussion and evaluation of funding requests in July, so we're behind there. And that was due to some discussions we've had about potential organizational structures and utilization of hot funds. So there are some questions out there from some of the normal applicants as to whether we're going to go through that process. Again, the basis of our budget here for 2013, sustainability, and we've defined that. We've built some modeling around that component. This will be a balanced budget. Now, with that balanced budget, what you'll see with the ultimate budget document that I'll be submitting to you in July at the end of this month, really will show some allocations that will come from other sources, for example, court technology, where we transfer funds in from some available balance. And so there's some minor operational and expenditure items which come out of some specifically designated funds when we've got some reserves built up to do various things. We are maintaining the current tax rate at fifty-six twenty-five. We have looked to maintain funding of our established priorities, again, which went back to a reaffirmation from our workshop in January. We are not using fund balance. As a matter of fact, we are adding to fund balance on both major operational funds. And then we are looking at utility rate increases for our capital projects only, no operational implications to those rate increases, and no new property tax-supported debt. Again, fiscal sustainability, you can see here that we have finished an additional analysis to extend that evaluation out another year. You can see the purple line represents our objective to hit our 25% fund balance on the general fund side, and you can see that we're on target to get there by about 2016 with the sustainability model that we've put into place. You can see here, from 2014 to 2015, a significant reduction in the anticipated revenue stream. And that's in anticipation of expiring county or local agreements, and we may see, or we're anticipating to be seeing some reductions in terms of county contribution, or maybe the county's desire to look at source delivery from different avenues. So that reflects really an anticipated impact there along that section. Our modeling is based on really a kind of conservative model where we're looking at about a one-and-a-half percent annualized increase on the general fund side over the planning cycle. In your January 2012 budget packet, you see really would, where we had two percent in general fund head on into 2013, that potentially two-and-a-half percent would be going into decline, we're down closer to half percent on the years that will form. Now, one of the things I will say too is, this blue line revenue stream is not factoring in yet any additional impacts that we may see from Fox Tank. There was a potential significant sales tax impact to the city. We have not yet seen really any data come forward, so not comfortable to see if that's a sustainable number. In addition to James Avery Craftsman with their annexation, we haven't yet seen a full year and know all the implications of that. So we don't have full inclusion of those two particular projects, for example, and we know that we're working on another project right now, Nature Blinds, and so we don't yet know whether that project will happen, and that there's some additional impact to us. And fiscal sustainability also applied sewer fund. This is even more important as us, the sewer plates that were out there, significant if it's there. As you see here is, sorry, the purple line is our 25% reserve fund target. The green line is what our actual cash balance is likely or is projected to build up over that period of time. Now, keep in mind that this blue line, this revenue line here, reflects what our current rates say. You'll see here where our report revenues well are. Then for that is, we had developed a reserve fund that we had headed over to the capital fund, so we placed, and we're trying to carry a full year's worth of debt service over on the capital side on the utility fund. And then we had reallocated some of the fund also to provide some funding for the city hall construction. So this number really reflects the movement of that cash. And what you can see is really maintaining this gap here. And the objective would be to be able to develop some additional cash over the long term that we can begin to utilize to do more cash-on-hand capital projects and improvements. And so that's a key component and some modeling that we're trying to build into from a long term to try to get more on a cash, or at least a short-term loan basis if we need to. The trick with the utility fund is making sure that we have the supplies and we've got the infrastructure capacity available for development. And our CIP has really been based on trying to provide a ten-to-fifteen-year capacity or some available supply and capacity to be able to accommodate growth. And we think within the next two years, we'll start to see some more significant commercial activity, so we're trying to be ready for that. Again, how are we doing on sustainability? We looked at the map. On the general fund, we have looked at an available revenue that we'd be looking for allocation from at 20.8 million. We're looking at a spending limit at 20.5 million. The proposed allocations that you have here are just right now a hair under 20.5, so we're looking at a net add to the fund balance of .3 or $300,000 for the next fiscal year 2013. Again, that keeps us on par with the modeling and the objectives that we had established and the policies that we had created. On the utility fund side, again, available revenue is projected to grow from about 8.9 to 9 million. Our spending limit that we had on our sustainability model is 8.9. We actually have a proposed allocation right now of 8.6 million, so right now, the net add to the fund balance is about $400,000. Some of the key items that I have included in the general fund, and the salary adjustments also really roll over into the utility as well as the other funds. One of the key issues, and I've got a little graph that will show this, is the street division. I've got a reorganization, and the total impact on general funds is about 50,000 for that department, for that component. The street division has assumed a lot of additional responsibility over the last two years. They are now trained and qualified to use street reconstruction equipment from asphalt lay-down machines to heavy equipment. And we really have folks that are operating in capacities now that far exceed what their compensation schedules are and what their job duties require of them. So we need to take care of that, and they've been such a critical part of our sustainability. It's very important. I've got a 2.75% across-the-board raise request in. If you look at our salary compensation program over the last several years, we've got employees without any salary adjustments going into next year, which could go three to four years without any adjustments. If you look over the last two fiscal years and the balance of this year, the Consumer Price Index for all goods and all purchases is about 5.7, 5.57%. So extrapolating that, we're about half of what the CPI inflationary numbers would indicate. The other key issue that really we have to begin to tackle with the salary adjustments also is our salary schedule. And we annually have been benchmarking to a pre-identified set of cities based back to a compensation study that was done about four or five years ago. And so we've gone back and re-benchmarked that. We didn't do it last year because we didn't do salary adjustments, but what it shows is our salary schedule has slipped. We have, I think more so than some of those other benchmark cities for sure, have felt the financial impacts a little bit harder, and we have held off on salary adjustments over the last several years as a result of that. We've had layoffs, we've had some other additional cuts that we've made at the personal side through that process. So for those reasons, I'm requesting that in this budget. Road reconstruction, we've got a 20% increase in the allocation there, which would extrapolate to probably another mile or so of lane miles of reconstruction. And so the allocation really goes from 500,000 to 600,000. At the end of the year, when you see our end-of-year financial report, you're going to show this year that we had budgeted and hopefully will have spent 600,000 this year. We had budgeted 500, and out of that number, we had been renting equipment, so we've been spending probably between 50, 40,000 to 50,000 a year to rent asphalt lay-down and some other heavy equipment. With a generous gift from the Calhoun Foundation over the last year, we've been able to purchase about half a million dollars' worth of equipment that we've been renting. So that entire allocation will go to materials and items that we actually need to put into the streets, so base and asphalt and those types of things. In addition to that, you know, this year, we had done a mid-year budget adjustment. We've been working with Crenwellge to close Rodriguez and abandon that, and part of that would be a payment of Crenwellge to the City of $100,000 for the property acquisition. And so we had done the budget amendment in anticipation of those revenues to roll into this year. So this reflects a significant increase from the city's perspective. Now, the key thing, and what you've read in your budget document, is that we have a pavement management scoring system and a plan for the community, and we really objectively over the long term need to get to a 15-year maintenance cycle, which means every street would have some, would be touched at least one time every 15 years. And so this, where we need to be is about double of where we are today. If you were to fund it entirely out of our operations, so you'd be looking at another crew, another set of equipment to do that. And so one of the things we need to evaluate over the longer term is where we begin to look at farming some of the work out. Do we look at doing more things with contracting? We have found in the level of work that we've been doing that we can actually deliver the work for probably about 60% of what it's been costing to contract out. So the other advantage that we have is we've got the equipment, we've got the personnel here that we can also have available to us through the rest of the year to do the other maintenance needs that we have. So there's a balance there. Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question on the road reconstruction. Your 20% increase is estimated on how many miles?
That's, we're currently doing about five miles, so we're looking to get about six miles, if I remember correctly, of reconstruction.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Would you like to ask some questions now, or would you prefer to wait until after you've throughed this?
Well, if I can run through, kind of give the picture, and then if we can come back. And we've got all of your management staff here, so if there's any departmental questions, we can pull them up. So.
Sure.
Health insurance cost is a significant issue that we'll need to get into. We've already budgeted about a six-and-a-half percent increase from $6,800 per employee per year to $7,100. We've had a high level of claims this last year. We've had some very unfortunate things that have happened. And so we're expecting to see healthcare premiums actually go above even the $7,100 that we may be budgeting here. One of the things that we have allocated for, and we build over, have been building over the last several years anyway, has been a healthcare reserve. So it's there to address any unanticipated healthcare expenditures or issues. And we may look to allocate some of the funding from that reserve over to help offset some of those costs. And so that's one thing we may look at. We're looking at having the bids submitted back to us on July 11th, so we'll know what those bids are coming in at. Another key purchase that we have on general fund side is the motor grader. We've been renting a large motor grader appropriate for major road reconstruction over the last five years. We've been paying 20,000 a year for it. We're coming up to the balloon payment. The final buyout of that equipment is 103,541. There's probably about 10 to 15 years of life left in that piece of equipment, we think. If we were to purchase new, you're talking about a quarter million, between $220,000 to $250,000. So we feel like this would be a good investment for the community, particularly since we're anticipating trying to ramp up and do more in-house construction.
How many years have we paid on it?
We have paid on that one five years.
Five.
So our net purchase of that equipment would be about $203,000. And we know the piece, we've maintained it well, we think it's in good shape. Charlie, I think we're the only owners of that piece, too. It's never been leased to any other entity. And I apologize, the print made it a little bit smaller. I may need glasses now. But this is really what the reorganization, reclassification on the street division would look like, and this is really kind of functionally how we're set up today, right here. And you can see here where we've got our street manager, assistant street manager, we have a sign tech. Tom, actually, is constantly working in the city repairing signs, replacing. He's got more work than he can say grace over. But we come to a crew leader, and then we come down to maintenance workers. We've got senior and line personnel. And as you can see, we really function more along this line here, where our crew leader here really operates as a superintendent. And where we have some of our senior crews, senior maintenance workers right now, really are operating as crew leaders. And you can see we've got a larger crew and a smaller crew based on this setup, because these crews, you'll have folks, operators, and other folks who will swing from crew to crew based on what we're doing. For example, right now, nearly everybody is working on road reconstruction. But in, when we're not doing road reconstruction, we've got other things going. We may have a crew working on mowing and right-of-way maintenance, another crew working on patching and crack sealing, those types of things. So this operation, this structure, really gives us the true reflection of how our men and personnel are actually being mobilized and utilized today. And I tell you, it's amazing to see the level of work that they've assumed over the last couple of years. Mr. Cochran, this is really the wrap-up on the general fund side, so at this point, are there any specific questions or clarifications we need on general fund?
I'll wait until we get to each of the departments. I just had some specific questions for the streets side.
Okay.
So I'll just wait till it's that presentation.
Okay. Of course, one of the key things that we monitor and track is general fund debt service. This gives you a picture of what the current debt picture looks like for the city at this point. And what you, oops. And then what you see here is 2023, we have a significant drop in terms of outstanding debt source obligations that are there. We're running about 1.2 million in tax-supported debt at this point. This blue line is the new EIC-funded debt here, so that goes to the Louise Hayes Park and River Trail construction. So that's what EIC is agreed to cover under the funding agreement. And this really speaks to what I referred to a little earlier with our analysis. If we begin to sell debt, obviously, these bars go up. So really, what this means, if you look at our flat-line economy, and if that were to continue on over the next eight to nine years, there's not a lot of room for significant debt issuance without a significant increase in the property tax. In our discussions, we've talked about trying to do the in-house things like road reconstruction as a primary means to continue to move forward and address issues without getting into the long-term debt issuance and staying on our sustainability model. Now, some things that could change this, and we would analyze this year to year to see if we have some sustainable growth in our local economy that would allow us to assume more debt and keep the tax rate range where it's at, would be the strategy here. And presuming things stay the way they are today, you're probably in planning mode in terms of what you would want to look at on the general fund side, probably within the next seven years, six years, something like that. At the earliest, you wouldn't look to do a debt sale probably until 2021. And so I know seven to eight years sounds like a long time, but it goes by fairly quickly. But the bottom line is, we've got some time that we really have to begin thinking about the types of things that we need to look at on the capital side. Now, there's some things that we've pushed from year to year that were in a five-year CIP, like a new fire engine. We talked about a new central station with a fire admin office, which is about, so the fire apparatus is about 1.3, 1.2, the fire station's about 4.3, so there's about 5.5 million that's there. We had talked about some drainage projects, some of the things that we have pushed out over a period of time. One of the things that we have done, or we had a plan for, was to issue about half a million a year in remedial drainage work, which would be small little problem drainage areas around town and trying to fix those. Every area that we analyze really wrapped up into a larger-scale issue, where you've got substantial downstream blockages and issues. So we've really knocked out the small projects that we can that would fit within a half million range, but you're talking about now major drainage structure issues. And when we talk about things like flooding on Lower Street, for example, that really wraps up into a $4 or $5 million project that requires some piping to get underneath the highway, to put some drop inlets in, and to work our way back out. So the drainage impacts are much more significant to address what we had previously determined would be nuisance areas. Okay, key issues on utility fund, again, are the 2.75 across the boards. We've gone back and we've done a scrub, our management team has on the utility fund side, to see where we can try to create additional capacity for our capital needs. And the sewer plant really is an example. And the sewer plant really is an example of that. And guarantee you, there's other things that are going to crop up over the years that are going to have to be addressed. So how do we try to begin to create the opportunity to address those needs without having to look at substantial rate adjustments and having to issue long and long and more long-term debt? The, one of the things that staff is working on really is a utility rate modeling program that would look at how we can really try to create more cash and try to get to, I won't say a complete pay-as-you-go, but what I consider a modified pay-as-you-go, where, again, you don't want to have to structure debt that goes out 20 years. If you can structure it, or at least provide the opportunity to amortize that over a 10-year period, those types of things. One of the key adds that we have on this utility fund operation is a GIS operator. We actually had a GIS position funded, and as we tried to economize and, and address our budgetary constraints over the last couple of years, we tried to combine that position over into IT. IT has too much workload there to do that, so we really need an operator to do that. We've spent quite a bit of money in developing and implementing a GIS system in the city. And GIS is critical to us in terms of documenting our system, knowing where it is, analyzing system issues. We use it, for example, in our water modeling, as we evaluate development impacts, CIP, all those types of things. So it's very critical for us on a planning basis, but it's also critical for us on a development services side. Being able to map, showing zoning maps, doing property notifications, providing information to development community is important, as well as all the other analysis that it does. So I think we're, we're to a point now where we really need to bring a GIS operator in. We've got to get back into maintaining the database and to begin to utilize it like we need to with the analysis that's needed. Again, we've got a dump truck replacement, $61,900. This goes back to help with our utility construction out there in the field, as well as, again, any of our water reclamation needs, anything else that's out there. The dump truck we're looking at is a 1999 model. It's got about 16,000 hours on it. We are objectively trying to replace them at 12,500 hours, so we're due, we're due at this point. It's a heavily-used piece of equipment. Again, the operating model that you have before you does not yet anticipate any rate increases. And we've talked about this for some time, about the capital improvement plan that we had identified for the next three to five years. There were about $18 million worth of water and sewer line extension projects. Out of that, a million was EIC cash for the Harper Highway Phase II. So there's another 17 million to do. So we'd issued some debt this year, and then we've got a $7 million issue planned for 2013, another 4.3 for 2014. The issue was, we're looking at about a 40 cent per thousand gallon increase on water and an 80 cent per thousand gallon increase on sewer. If you roll up those two, that's about a $9.60 per month increase on an average water bill, which is 8,000 gallons per month. So obviously, the, we have a rate schedule that increases as you utilize more water. So it could go higher or lower depending on what your actual usage is, but this is average. What this rate adjustment would do, it would bring in about another $900,000 a year in revenue into the general fund, I'm sorry, into the utility fund, which would then create capacity for another 12 to 13 million dollars of debt capacity, which is what we need to finish out what we're doing today under that program. What that does for us, again, it prepares the community for that growth, as well as addresses system failures that we have. Our, our system hasn't been maintained really over the last 20, 30 years, and we've got capacity and we've got failures out there that we've got to address. So over the last five to eight years, this has been working hard to expand its water capacity. We now have expanded that to a point where we can grow about another 33% on water, and this really begins to address the sewer that's out there. Again, this gives us about a 10 to 15-year growth capacity, and so hopefully, we get to fill that up, if that's a positive thing. 2.5 million square feet of additional commercial and industrial square footage could be served in addition to another 1,200 new residential units through that investment. And again, these are numbers and cost implications and rate adjustments that we had discussed early on with EIC, and we did joint, I guess, towards the end of 2011. And so we're seeing that our numbers are still consistent with that. Now, on the capital side, we may have a couple of funding options to look at. Again, the current plan is a 2013 issue at 7, and then 2014 at 4.3. One of the things we could look at as an alternative, and again, if you look at what the current market has generated for us recently and for the county, they did even better than we did with our last sale. They're getting very good rates right now. So we don't know if the market, bond market's still holding within that range, but if it is, one of the things that we probably need to think about is whether you go ahead and issue the bank-qualified maximum of 10 million with 2014, looking at zero debt issuance and trying to set aside 1.3 million in cash instead. So instead of financing 11.3 over 20 years, you finance 10, and then you do 1.3 million in cash, and you begin to try to move more towards that model that we had talked about. But again, I think a key factor of that is going to be what happens with the current bond market out there. This chart really reflects very closely what we see in the utility fund. Again, if you look back through the 80s and 90s, the city was spending really less than, right at about a quarter million across all infrastructure maintenance and expenditure. So in the last 10 years, the city's really had to ramp up and start reinvesting in those capital maintenance and upgrades. And really, to do that, it's not a matter of if you do, it's just a matter of when. So what we've looked at is, you know, again, on the sewer and water side, you've got to have capacity there when you need it. And when we look at a potential debt issuance coming up in 2013, you've got debt service which will hit the utility fund in 2014, so you'll see this number go up. So with that issuance in 2014, you're going to see a debt service range that brings us about to that 35% limit that we had established by policy. So when we talk about the additional 11 million, for example, at the sewer plant, that would be a cost that would go in addition to that. So we really need to find other strategies to minimize the impacts of these across the board, and we're modeling that. We'll bring that back to you. But the key issue is, when you need that service, it's got to be there. We can't be in a situation, if we're going to be aggressive on economic development, where we say, yeah, come on in as a, as a prospect, and then we'll have sewer for you in two years. I mean, we've got to have an adequate capacity. And again, that target number of 10 to 15 years capacity is really what we'd looked at. Okay. So what happens to us if we do this and our rates adjust? This is the existing rate. We see our bar in the yellow against other communities that we benchmark against across the state. And you see we're about in the middle, our current rate structure. If you hold everybody else's rate structure the same, you can see what that impact is to a Kerrville resident. Again, this is based on 5,000 gallons. If you take it to 8,000 gallons, oops, sorry about that, you're going to be in this range over here. Same thing here. At 8,000 gallons, we fall in a range that slides up into here. Again, you'll move everybody else forward because they've got volumetric rates. So we're about median today. We'll still be high median at this point, under holding everybody else's rates constant. If they move forward, we move with that scale. If you look at the city's total debt, you look at all the utility fund, all the general fund debt, and you look at the total cost per capita, which is about $2,200 per capita. This is where we sit. And again, we've looked at these benchmark cities, and you'll see us against a statewide average for communities that are comparable to us in terms of bond rating and, and size, okay? And you can see we're about half of what their debt, per capita debt looks like. These cities were not selected by us. We talked to our bond advisor with First Southwest to help us identify communities across that we should look at that are comparable to us in terms of size, in terms of our location from a major metropolitan area, those types of things. So these communities are consistent with us and who we are today, and undergoing the same financial contributions. If you look at our water and sewer debt, again, you can see on those benchmark cities, we're higher than the other benchmark communities. Some of the factors we don't know is, for example, where they get their water, are they purchasing, are they producing? You know, are they into any other regional types of things that are there? We, we don't know to that level of detail. Again, when you look across the state at cities our size and in our financial picture, they're substantially higher than we are. But one of the key things is, we know we're carrying some significant debt over the last few years. We know that, and that really is being reflected here when you compare us against the other comparable places that are there.
Todd, what other cities are included in the AA3 and AA2? Can you remember how many it is?
That's, that's going to be a statewide average, and so I don't, I can't tell you exactly how many that's going to be.
Okay.
I don't have that information. We can pull that for you.
But it's many more than the several that are listed here?
Yes, yes. There's, there's 1,500 cities in the entire state of Texas, and so we've probably got in our range, so between 20 to 30,000, we're probably about 150 to 200 cities that are about our size.
Oh, wow. Okay.
The operating ratio, you know, we're operating at a high operating ratio here. So when you look at debt to income, we're operating at about a 71% ratio. So our, you know, the, ultimately, what I'm saying here really is that we have a fairly low overall debt ratio and debt burden in the city. And that's really a reflection of a 20 to 25-year picture where we had debt issuance. We looked at pay-as-you-go, and we've had several years here, we've had to add this to try to catch up and get to a place where we need to be for both, to serve existing residents, as well as to make room for new growth. The key issue that we are really looking at is economic health and viability. One of the things that we looked at with the 2012 package is, we went back and, again, we looked at about 22 cities. We made 22. We looked at 21 others to benchmark of all sizes and different metropolitan areas, to try to get a feel for what their debt per capita ratios look like, what portion of their MNO, what portion of their INS, we're going towards debt service. And we came out very high in terms of the portion of the maintenance and operations component of our property tax that go towards maintenance and operations, but we came out one of the very lowest, if we were the second lowest with regard to how much actually goes to debt service. Benbrook was the only community that was lower than we were. And, you know, Benbrook's a fast-growing community. They've got an expansive population growth, a lot of commercial that's happened over the last 10 years or so. So when you look at other cities that are more established, their debt ratio gets closer to maybe a 60, 40, or 70, 30 range. So really, it comes down to, are we managing it correctly? And are we staying within the parameters that we had established, and are we accomplishing the mission? One of the key things that we've tried to do with our budget has been to identify what we're objectively trying to do, department by department, what the anticipated results or benefits the community would be, and how we're applying, utilizing those. So we've really kind of built the budget towards a performance-based component. To kind of recap, on city council direction this morning, here's the, the key things we were asking in specific direction on. Another I would ask is, you know, in terms of HOT, are we, do we need to think about implementing our application and review process or not? But again, these other items really kind of re-rack the things that I presented and talked a little bit about this morning. So Mayor Council, I'll be quiet now and turn it back to you for question and direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Todd, at the end of that, you're talking about that we're higher on, on MNO, but much lower on what part? INS, interest and sinking?
That's correct.
Portion? Or the overall debt per capita?
Well, we're... We are low on the overall debt per capita. We are low on the portion of our interest in sinking as a portion of our overall tax rate, and then we're high on the maintenance and operations component of our tax rate.
What I would... Of course, if you have any, if you have any more.
And if you, if you look on page 31 of your 2012 workshop, you'll see those charts reflected on page 31.
What I would be interested in seeing, you've got, you've done a good job here on, on the per capita. What I would like to see is the number of employees in those cities, and then take that on a per capita basis as well. What I, what I see here is, is a lot of flatland cities. It'd be a better comparison if we had cities that were in a topography that we have, because it's more expensive to do utilities up and down than it is doing flat. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
The problem is finding ones that are comparable size that have the same topography.
Yeah.
It seems like they're all either much smaller or much larger.
I think we can look at some cities. I'm kind of thinking up in North Texas area, you know, north of Denton, you've got some topography up there. So we'll, we'll look to see what we can pull on cities that would be comparable to topography. And kind of maybe, they may not be our size, but we can kind of rank it back to per capita basis.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Todd, what are, what are our options with the HOT funds? What did we do last year?
Well, last year, we have, we had implemented our application process. And so we really go through a process where we advertise and allow interested groups that may want to apply to the city for HOT funds to make application. And with that, there's an application form that requires them to submit specific data, and it goes back to gauging the impact that their request will have on bringing tourism into town. And so particularly overnight, overstay, overnight stay tourism. So that's the process that we have typically done. SUDY and CVB have typically helped us to initiate that application process. Of course, CVB is one of the applicants every year for those funds as well, has been. One of the key things, one of the questions that's out there is, a lot of the applicants have typically, are trying to get into contract here pretty quick for their advertising and their marketing pieces. And so there's a question at this point whether they can make those, those expenditures, so they just don't know where they are financially at this point.
Didn't we last year just give them advertising? We just put it all into one fund? Didn't we do something different last year?
There was a, there was a generalized, I think we did a couple of different things, if I remember correctly. Mike can... Mike can probably help me clarify this better, but, Mike, actually, you want to describe that for us? Thanks.
Last year, we funded CVB, and then we set aside about $105,000 for special events coordinator. And then I want to say there was $50,000 or so that went to the arts co-op. It did not go to individual organizations, but it went to the group to be allocated among themselves.
Okay. I mean, I would kind of like to look into that whole arts co-op. I've heard some people say they want to rethink that. I'm not sure. They'd rather have the money themselves. But whether that's the right course or not, I don't know, but that's something I'd like to discuss.
So really, discussion as to whether we even continue to fund the arts co-op or whether you look at a specific allocation for specific folks?
Yes.
We went from utility funding for capital projects graph to debt per capita. So I'm assuming that debt per capita, well, I'm not going to even assume, I'll just ask, is that still utility or now we're looking at overall?
That's the total debt.
Okay.
So that's all utilities. So we're carrying right now about $4.1 million total annualized debt, about $2.9 million of that is utility.
Okay. What I'd like to see is something that states two things. One, the total curvill debt per citizen, per cabinet, and the total curvill debt per average household.
Okay.
In dollars.
Sure.
Todd, going back to your two alternatives for issuance of debt on utility funding, I'd just like to voice my support for the alternative plan. One, because I think it lets you take advantage of much lower interest rates that probably aren't going to stay there forever. And two, just based on what you've shown, because it actually overall nets us less debt and puts more cash in. So I'd like to encourage y'all to explore that further.
I don't think that we envisioned that at the joint EIC and council workshop, we'd get to find out what the rates were and really consider that. I think we were pleasantly surprised when the actual issuance came around, that January, or, well, December and then January.
We were ready to be happy at three and a half, I think, yeah. I think we'd actually run our models at three and three-quarter or four, something like that at that time.
Way over.
Who knew?
Well, in a broader sense, I know we're going to get into a lot of details here in a few minutes, but in a bigger picture of the budget, the sustainability model, maintain the tax rate, and I think most importantly, that we were able to fit employee salary increases into it. And I wish we could figure out how to do more. One of my, I guess, instead of asking department by department, and if there's no answer to this, that's fine, but in a broader sense, we added $400,000 in personnel costs with this budget over last year. What portion of that, I realize some of that was additional positions, and probably even some of that was the anticipated increase in health insurance cost. What, we have a dollar amount that's attributable to the 2.75% increase.
Well, on the general fund side, about $400,000 is attributable to the 2.75. So when you roll that up on salary and TMRS and FICA, all the related expenses, what I had originally modeled, this is about half of what I had hoped to try to incorporate into the budget, and because we've gone multiple years now without any adjustments at all, you know, one of the things, well, I won't go into a lot of detail, unless you want to, on step plan, but on police and fire, you know, they're under a step plan, whereas general government had been under a, in utility, under a merit program over the last several years. And step is really looking at a 4% adjustment on the steps that you qualify for every other year. So you're looking on an annualized basis about 2% a year, you know, for our public safety personnel. So we turned steps off a couple of years ago, and so that means that the last step implication or implementation was 2008. So folks that got that, that fell into 2009 forward have gone without anything, and some of them are our most senior staff that are out there. We still have salary compression that we've got to look at as well, particularly in fire and police, where we've got folks that may be at a same pay grade, that their salaries are very close, even though one may have been at that pay grade for two or three years, and somebody may have been at that pay grade for 10. So there's some things like that that we have to look at over a longer picture. To get to this number or to look at some additional adjustments without some other, without going in damaging the ability to stay on the sustainability track, we're talking about eliminating some additional programs. So there's some additional reductions in costs we'd have to do to try to make that happen, so.
Well, that was my, my general question is, how, if we had to come up with $400,000 in the budget for 2.75% increase, and we want to increase further in the future, where did those cuts generally come from? And therefore, that leads me to, well, how can we continue that in the future to get our pay up? Because when I look at the salary survey, I realize there's, you know, it could be a larger number of cities to compare to, but what I see is that it's kind of a concerning picture when you look at what the actual averages are, and that we're much lower than we want to be or we hope to be on those. When you look at the stated minimum, we're not as bad, but when you look at the actual average compared to what everyone else's actuals are, then it's a worse picture. What that tells me is that our stated, we're staying too close down to this minimum scale, and we're not picking them up as we should be, or others, other cities are doing that. And so where we want to continue to increase, you know, salaries in the future, I'm trying to figure out how we can achieve that, and what have we done this year? Where have we cut? Has it been a small portion in each department? And I couldn't really get a sense of it looking through the budget, and wanted to ask you in a broader picture, you know, how have we been able to achieve this?
Well, our, we've had a little bit of growth in revenue, so we've been able to have that based on our projected revenue there. We have, over the past couple of years, we've cut operations expenses down exceedingly low. And, you know, for example, in my budget submission for my department, you know, a couple of years ago, I'd cut out zero conferences, I cut out my membership to ICMA and some things like that. So I've got some additions in there, but we've gone back like we do every year, and we go back to every single line item and say, okay, what do we really need within that line item? And so where we've been able to curtail and do some things there. You know, over the years, we have deferred capital, and we still got some, we're replacing some pieces we're planning to. For example, we need to replace three police cruisers, and there's some other capital components that are in there that we have scheduled for replacement. Some of the key ones we hit today are, again, the motor grader, some things like that. You know, motor grader is a $103,000 impact to this budget that isn't there next year. So we've got some one-time capital that we're capturing as we move forward. So, but on the line item operational components, we are down to some very minimalistic numbers in terms of what we actually spend, and so we're continuing to try to economize and make do. In some instances, you've seen, or you will see, some of those office supplies may go up, but this year, for example, we had some inventory that we were able to draw down and utilize, so we'll have to replenish and replace. Police Department ammunition, they buy a huge amount of ammo every other year, and so we have some implications with some of those things. So some of those things fluctuate. The five-year fiscal forecast rolls in a 3% annualized increase in salaries. So part of the fiscal sustainability and the components there roll in that as a component to where we are now. The other thing is that where we see more significant economic growth over in particularly the next couple of years, hopefully we begin to see that, you'll have some additional revenue streams coming in that have expanded on a solid basis, our economy. But at the end of the day, in this budget, to get there, we're looking at programming cuts to make some significant additional revenue increases. The other side to it, you know, if you look at a penny on the tax rate, generates about $120,000 in actual revenue. So you'd have to have a very high rate increase to make a, to bring in a significant amount of property tax dollars into the community. So really, I think we've just got to operate off of what those revenue streams are that we have and continue to try to economize as we can. But we're to a point operationally in department to department where there's not a lot of movement in terms of office supplies and those types of things that are out there. The budget really allows us across the board to continue with really what we're doing today. The pullbacks and the cuts we've made over the past couple of years really are carried forward into this as we move on. So the other thing that we're thinking about is, you know, if we can strike the River Trail and we have some of those other projects, there's additional costs that'll be associated with that, and factoring those into our spending plan as well.
Todd, could you explain longevity in the budget and give us a little history, how long it's been there? When was it implemented? The purpose?
Well, the longevity that we provide is $4 per month per employee after their first year of employment with the city. So there's a longevity payment that's made to every city employee. The state actually has specified that firefighter and police personnel have got to receive longevity. And so from a fairness basis, the city provides longevity for all the employees. In terms of exactly how long it's been on the books, I don't know. I don't know, Kim, if you've got an answer for that, but I think it predates...
For more than 35 years. It was here before I started.
It was here before Brenda started. It means it's been here a long...
Long time.
It was 22 cents per month, I think, back then.
No, it's always been four.
Good, thank you. Is that included in the comparison, in the compensation package? Is that included in the comparison?
The longevity did not increase. We did, if that's, if I understand your question correctly.
No, no. Question is, is when you're comparing compensation, was that included in curvilles compensation?
No.
It was not?
No.
So when in the comparison, you'd have to add that in?
Well, and we don't know if the other cities included their longevity in as well, because other cities are going to carry longevity as well as we are.
Okay. What do you expect on group insurance?
Well, again, we're at 6,800 now. I thought we were being appropriately cautious at 71. We could be looking at 76,000 to 8,000. It could be as high as 8,100 per employee per year. So when you look at the actual cost, it's, even without a full year, the actual cost is nearing what the premium payments are into the system right now. And so that's really what we're up against as an organization right now. We're going to present to y'all on the 24th the results of our bid, and Bob Tracy is our consultant that helps us bid and negotiate our programs. He's also going to discuss with us what the nationalized healthcare reform will do, what the implications of that are as well. So we'll begin to get a feel from that perspective, too. So when we talk about our five-year fiscal forecast, that's something else that could have a significant impact, one way or the other. We don't know, nobody really knows what that cost is right now.
When we put that out for bid, did we provide any instructions or any desires to be able to make sure that the city employees, can you send Peterson through that benefit plan?
We're going with the fully insured programs that are there, and I don't know, Kim, how Sid Pete works into that?
Yes, they're part of the Hill Country Healthcare Alliance.
Okay.
So yes, they would, under our plan right now with United Healthcare and with Humana before, they're part of the Hill Country Healthcare Alliance, and so benefits were provided through Peterson as a new network provider.
Okay, thank you.
We had that problem in our company a couple of years ago. The hospital no longer was in our network, and so we had to basically switch our entire insurance over because it was worthless.
Yeah. It's something we need to make sure we have up front. Carson, do you have any?
No, just some details for later.
Okay.
And I will say, on our insurance rates, Kim has done a phenomenal job over the last four or five years, where other folks' rates have gone up. About three years ago, we were at $8,400 per employee per year, and we're down to $6,800 per employee per year, and we've maintained, on the health insurance side, very comparable levels of coverage. Now, there have been some, some adjustments, but we're seeing a little reversal at this point, but...
I asked for some comparisons by debt per family and per individual. That's current debt. I'd like to see the same thing for proposed debt.
Okay, so, and what I've got, what I had written down, just to make sure I've got it correct, debt per capita and debt per household in dollars. And so that's for current, that's, and we'll break it down. That's for total, that's for tax-supported, for utility rate-supported, and then we'll also roll in the implication for new debt issuance.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to put the 4B funded debt in there, what we recently issued?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll break all those out specifically, and we'll have a roll-up number?
And then, and then one cumulative number.
Do you want us to provide any forecasting in terms of what that per capita expense would be over a period of time? Presumably, we'll have some growth, population and commercial growth, so try to model in what that would look like over a period of time?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as direction goes, personally, I'd like to make sure that our property tax remains the same.
I think everybody would like to see that.
Yes. Our, the total city budget is made up of 68% of compensation. Would that be pretty fair? Okay. Our total retirement budget is one, I'm giving you round figures, 1.2 million. Social Security's about 1 million. Group insurance is about 2 million. And I lumped this not by wage and salary, but I lumped it by total compensation. And I lumped this not by wage and salary, but I lumped it by total compensation of 16.3 million.
That's right.
I, too, would like to see the employees of Curville get a raise. It's very important. So, I would like a little explanation, though, on across-the-board increases versus where the city plans to go, if they have any plans at all, about performance indicators. Would you like to address that?
We have traditionally looked at a merit-based adjustment. And so, we would budget an average per employee and then based on your annual performance review and how you performed is either, whether you are below, you wouldn't say qualify for a salary adjustment, and then depending on how well you either meet or exceed, or far exceed, would then have a range in terms of what your salary adjustment would look at. And so, that's what we had implemented over the last several years, anyway. I'm not proposing at this point because we have gone so long without, and I think our inflationary rates show that we're about half, even with this adjustment of even keeping pace with what's happened out there. And so, I, I feel like really that this adjustment, and I'm requesting it across the board because our employees need to know, they need to see some adjustment there. I think, once we begin to see the ability with some increased revenues coming into the community where there's some additional adjustments we need to get back to merit, I think that's an important component. It's important not just for the council to know that we're rewarding the right employees, but I think it's also fair to all the employees. You know, if you, you work hard and, and you know that, that you're putting it in and maybe somebody doesn't as much, that, that there's a fairness component to that as well. But, in this case, because of where we are and the fact that we've frozen pay scales and we've frozen our salaries for so long, I, I just feel this, this adjustment doesn't even really keep pace with what the inflationary factors are. So, that's why I'm requesting this across the board this year. I typically wouldn't request that.
Okay.
And I don't know about the rest of the council, but I just seem to see our city manager also received that 2.75 increase. I see you put yourself, you're the only one not getting an increase. And if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to see Todd get that 2.75 increase as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't, I don't think that's going to work because I'll look at it like this, we're, it's a team here and to exclude yourself, although admirable, is, that's not the, you wouldn't exclude yourself and only have a raise and the same thing is, you know, the contrary is true. You wouldn't exclude yourself and everyone else get salary increases and, and you not. So, I think it's, it's an all or none, I think not all or none. I think you need to go along with the rest of it as well. The, the hours and the work that you put in and the effort and there's no, there are no exceptions taken with any other position, any other, any other places. So, regardless of where they stood and the benchmark to other cities and, you know, we're, we're low in the, the city manager position as well. So, that needs to be, be put in the budget somehow as well.
If I, if I could respectfully say, if I could defer any compensation adjustment for me, I, I think it's more important to take care of other things we need to take care of right now. I appreciate that, but I really think, at this point, we really need to, I just think there's other, better places to put that right now and...
Well, I understand, but we can, we've got some time to look through this. We'll find some, someplace somewhere, but I think that needs to be planned on and built into it. We can discuss where, you know, other places, but that needs to be kept up along with the other, other positions in the city.
Yeah, if it were performance-based, you'd be getting a lot more.
I think I'd be giving you money back.
No. Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that support.
Todd, were we going to go through the straw man budget by department? I just didn't want to make any assumptions. We hadn't talked about it. We did last year and I didn't know if that was going to be the same or if we're going to change the way, the format of the meeting this morning.
No, and this is, this is y'all's meeting, so to ask any questions and, and to drill into whatever level you want to. Now, one of the things I'm looking to do is, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to scrub this probably at least 14 more times, right, everybody? Mr. Guthrie looks excited about scrubbing it four more times, anyway. But, what I, what I will deliver ultimately on July 31st is a budget handoff. I will be delivering you a document that will be my final budget proposal. So, any direction y'all have this morning, to drill down to whatever level, would be greatly appreciated. So, wouldn't be sensitive to y'all's time as well.
I think, just looking back at last year, I know Scott had made some comments and I kind of went along with them and I perhaps didn't approach it the right way. I think we get into a lot of detail and then looked at if, you know, we took an hour to kind of read through 5% of the budget. I think we kind of made some comments about, well, look, let's, we don't, I don't want to cover things that we can read. I'd like more of kind of an overview, maybe hit some of the more, some changes from last year's, you know, in terms of per department and the individual giving the, you know, the presentation. And, you know, I've read, read through it and just have some questions. I like to focus more on what's been adjusted, modified, major issues and challenges that they see this year and in the future, as opposed to just like repeating data that's here, especially in, in, you know, going down very specific budgets and partial FTE equivalents and things like that. But I would like to hear from, from each of the departments if that suits the rest of council.
Then, suit your wish.
Well, we'll start with Ms. Craig.
Let's start with you, dear. I'm just available if you have any questions about my budget. I did increase the amount significantly. My biggest increase is in the election expense. This year, we were able to do the election for the amount that was budgeted simply because we shared costs with the school district. This was the first year in many years that the school district actually held an election, so we were able to save costs. I doubt seriously that we can depend on that in the future, so I did put about $1,000 in there. That was my major increase.
$1,000, Brenda?
Well... You might want to roll through city council, too.
You do city council, I don't.
On the city council side, we carried through about 7,100, $7,091.25 for council allocation. And so, again, part-time temporary, that's the $25 per meeting cost there. And then, we've got the related expenses there. Office supplies, about $400. And so, as there are specific things that y'all may need, you know, we use a little bit of office supplies that we bill you for on those components. And then, on dues and subscriptions, we got you there at $4,000. So, we address you there and, and with some of those dues and subscriptions, there's just some routine things that we have that are out there in terms of participation in, in various activities. If there's also any kind of professional affiliations or any kind of travel and training, we can hit that line for anything like that as well. So, one of the things we always do like to ask is, are there any specific classes or training or either by specific or in terms of any anticipated conferences and things like that that you would like us to contemplate moving forward into next year? You know, TML, for example, is in October and so, that will, that impact rolls on in and so there's some things like that, so...
That's already included.
Just up to you guys. Well, we haven't had much participation in council in at least the last couple of years and I think part of that was the financial constraints the city's been under. So, are there some things there? And I tell you, TML probably need to factor in about 1,000 per person there because it's a week long and you're there, it's very intense. It's a fantastic opportunity to go and network and learn some valuable things. So, if there's some things like that that you'd like to go to, you know, Austin, TML in Austin will go through issues, dates regarding legislative actions, some things like that. So, there may be day trips or maybe other things that, that for y'all to think about if you'd like to see that we would need to add to this amount as well.
What page is that on, Todd? I don't remember reviewing the council portion.
I think we probably omitted it in your packet, so...
No wonder I couldn't find that.
I'll need to email your budget back out.
I kept on this, now, look, I got this all tabbed out. Did I leave one out?
Okay.
Personally, I, I'd like to keep the city council allocation as low as possible. I, I know, I went to the new city council, or it's something like, help, I'm a new city council member, TML thing, which was really very helpful, but I paid for that myself. I didn't think that was something the taxpayers should pay for, so. I like, you know, no subscriptions. We ask you every year, what are those subscriptions? We don't need them, take them out, but they're still there. I mean, I guess we have to go along to certain things, but in my opinion, I'd like the city council budget as low as possible.
Yeah, I'm willing to pay my own way on stuff like that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially for the time being considering where we are. Todd, could you give me some kind of indication on what, what subscriptions those are, what we, what we have, where the $4,000 comes from?
Well, there, there are things like we participate in ACOG, you know, so there's some annualized expenses there. So, we've got other regional kind of things that are out there that, that, that y'all have. And then, if we carry a newspaper or things like that, that, but I think we pretty much pulled that out. It's TML, TML is another...
I mean, to me, those are something that we have to have. I'm, I'm looking more at like, you know, some things that we can do without. I hope we don't pay for the junk mail that we get, like...
We probably do.
About 18 of those a week.
I think pretty much that's, we have stripped over the years, everything out that wasn't absolutely necessary is pretty much out now.
Okay.
So, if there's any additional things that y'all want, we really are going to be an add-in.
I noticed some emails on, on publications, they want me to subscribe and I just, that's the leaky.
I remember we, I think we cut a couple of years ago, newspaper subscriptions down to three in admin at least, so city secretary has one...
No, three.
Across the city, yeah, so Mindy's the keeper of the newspaper key there. Okay. Okay. City secretary or city attorney, sir?
City attorney.
Sometimes one and the same. Mine are just wrapped up really into, any, any increases are wrapped up in personnel costs. Looks like they took out my request for front-end loader, so I'm down to...
The question was?
Front-end loader. Seen times when he might need one of those.
You know, it comes up from time to time.
You just have to rid it from utilities.
I don't know if it's a trust issue or a budget issue, but probably, oh, insurance.
What would you do with a front-end loader?
Don't ask.
Actually, he, we did offer up a back-end loader, but he rejected that one.
Yeah. Like, the big, the big hit last year was outside legal fees from CREZ and a handful of other issues, the water well, or the ASR well issue. $25,000 is what we carry standard kind of every year, you're projecting and what we've spent in the past.
You know, it is and that's, that's the, really the hope and the prayer for that type of, the hope is, obviously, you don't have to spend it, but it's kind of a benchmark that I've inherited when I got into office. I always, it's been as low as 15 budgeted and as high as 40, 45, I think. Of course, when you, when you go through a CREZ or certainly as an ASR well litigation that we're, we're into now, that factors in. Now, remember, the CNC, that comes out of the Water and Wastewater Fund because that's, that's their fund. But, $25,000 I think is a fair, fair amount. Sometimes the bulk of it is returned and sometimes we need budget amendments, so...
But you don't, you don't see any issues coming up potentially that could cause that to inflate significantly?
At this point, no.
Now, when Justin gets finished with Zoic, are you going to have to write that thing out? The zoning ordinance, that would be used?
Yes.
Zoic's already complaining that he's not working fast enough on providing information, so...
But now that I have the sign code off my desk, then I can divert some attention.
We had to field that yesterday in your absence.
Thanks.
On administration, one of the ads here is, when we started fiscal year 2012, we actually had a position budget reception and as the resignation occurred, then we tried to go in with a couple of part-timers to save money and then we rolled them back out of the budget entirely. So, we actually borrowed a part-time receptionist from the library when they were closed during the renovation. So, with the new city hall opening up, we definitely are going to have to have somebody down in the lobby to greet and direct people. So, that is included in the budget. And that, the plan is to share that cost fifty-fifty between utility fund and city because they're going to be fielding a lot of utility operations, directing people for utility billing, which will be down there at the front as you walk in. Our assistant city manager has been using her own cell phone. She voluntarily cut that out of budget last year, so I've got a reinstatement of a city-provided phone for her. And on the dues subscriptions, again, I've added back in one conference, either TML or Texas City Manager Association, and then reinstated ICMA membership dues there. And then, what you'll see in a few departments, I've reinstated car allowance. You've got several management folks who, car allowances were taken out a couple of years ago and so we're still utilizing personal vehicles. So, I've reinstated that in here and then you'll see it in a couple of other departments as well.
I was glad to see that was, was taken care of. Okay, so you said you're, you are planning on attending a TML or a Texas City Manager Association meeting?
Correct. And if we have to, if we have to make a cut, that's one area I would go to is probably eliminate that and I'd probably take ICMA back out as well.
You know, I disagree with cutting those out, though, Todd, because I think you interacting with other folks that are professional managers as you're, such as yourself, is good. I think that share of ideas that occurs there is, is really beneficial to everybody.
I, I agree, wholeheartedly, especially your IMCA membership dues.
Well, if, if that'd be the last one I'd cut, that's really been hamstringing, not having that subscription over the last couple of years. There's a lot of positive things that come out of that, so...
Todd, if we could go back to page 15, I have a question for Travis. It says a minimum or a maximum turnaround of three days for all web-based inquiries. Is that, is that normal to Travis or is it usually sooner than that? Is it usually three days to get back to someone via email?
No, that's, we actually have been doing that within a day.
Okay.
So, the ones that have come in...
That's my fault. It's just a maximum of three, but usually it's within...
Right, and that, that gives us, quite honestly, a little edge in case we get into a more detailed situation. But, I tell you, you know, folks that you see before you have been phenomenal. They, they come in, Mary monitors, and then she's forwarding that back out to people and they're responding almost instantaneously.
That's, that's always been my experience, so I just wanted to check on that. Thanks.
Ready to go? Okay, on the human... Okay, on the human resources budget, there is an increase in the salaries to reflect the 2.75% increase. All the other personnel line items are increased at that rate as well, or like that. I added in, under local meeting expenses, $360 to attend the San Antonio HR Management Association meetings. I'm still attending those, but I'm paying for those myself, so I wanted to add that back into the budget. The car allowance is in there as well. We reduced our office supplies by $300. Telephone service, I was, had been using my personal city cellphone and want to continue to use a city cellphone instead of my personal phone. The increase in the insurance bonds is for my notary, which is coming due. Advertising, we reduced that by $750. Employment physicals, we reduced that by $240. Drug and alcohol testings, we reduced that by $2,000. And certificates and awards, we reduced it by $1,000. Dues and subscriptions, we have some new HR staff that need to join HR organizations so that they get newsletters and emails and are able to attend conferences at discounted rates.
Is drug and alcohol testing, that's for only new hires, or do we have random drug testing?
We have random drug testing on our DOT employees, and it's also for post-accident or for calls.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a question on that. The only place I saw in the budget, the word COLA.
COLA, the cost of living adjustment?
Yeah, that's the only place I saw it in the, so that 2.75, you just named it COLA, but it's not really COLA.
Well, it's a salary adjustment.
Adjustment, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On the finance department, if you'll notice, the majority increase, once again, is in salaries. We did have a couple of employees that we bumped just a little bit to help take care of things. We also, one other thing that we did along with other departments in the city is certification pay. When we have an employee, such as Si, go out and earn a certification, we like to recognize them for their effort. Some of the things that we hope to accomplish, probably our big goal this year, will be we're currently at a double A minus. Standard and Ports has redone their classification system. We've been tracking it, taking a look at it, and our goal will be is if the city does sell debt, we will try for the double A to lose the minus on our credit rating, and that's probably one of the big things that we're looking at doing this next year. Most everything else will remain the same. Under travel, under dues and subscriptions, travel and train, you'll see about 2,500 or so. Between the two of us, we're required to maintain approximately 70 CPEs a year, and so those monies will be put to use for that purpose. And I'll go ahead and do the water and sewer, water records while I'm up here, so we can move quickly.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
What are the implications of going to an AA rating instead of AA minus?
You hope to see a little bit of a drop in the interest rate we would pay. I'm not sure, you know, Ann has mentioned that we have a favorable reputation out in the community, in the debt community right now, so I don't know if it will make a huge difference, but then, once again, it's just continuous improvement. And hopefully we'll get a little bit of a drop in the interest, but also we'll lose that minus. So, okay. On the water and sewer fund, that budget has basically managed to stay, if you'll look, just a little bit less than it was in the 12 approved.
Mike, what page would that be on?
That would be on page 113 through 118, yes. And a couple of things in the water records department, they're working on implementing more of a mobile work order system. IT's working with us to help set up, not the Wi-Fi that's been discussed at EIC, but a Wi-Fi that will allow our workers to, instead of coming in for work orders, to pick them up online out in the field and just continue. And one of the things I'd like to brag on is our staff on work orders, right now, they're at 100% on one day. So if we have a work order come in, they take care of it that day before the end of the day. And then one other thing that we'll work to maintain is, we're at about 98% collection rate for the water utility, and we'll work to maintain at that level. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now or later in the process.
I'll wait. It's about meter reading and the electronic versus, and how much are we saving because of that?
We were able to move one person off the meter reading prior to the meters that were put in place a couple of years ago, that Sandra led that project. It would be four people, maybe a day or two days out in the field to read one cycle, and we have three cycles on the meter reading. The way it works now, we're able to have typically one person within one day can read a cycle. So that frees us up for that work order time, for the reread times. We also, as people have noticed, we're able to now send out leak letters to notify our customers if there's a leak, and we're able to go out and provide customer service along those lines to double-check and follow up on those.
So in theory, we save labor costs 75%?
Nah, 25%, saved one person.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that we were able to reallocate. Yes, sir.
But what we did with that, too, is we also then merged one of those positions with the purchasing agent and really kind of create, we eliminated really, I guess, one and a half positions through that effort.
Thank you.
And the IT budget for this coming year, we're proposing really some minor adjustments. You'll see some increases, but that's because we pulled other IT expenditures out of other departments' budgets in an effort to try to centralize it. Some of the things that don't fall into that category is we are adding some certification pay for staff to keep that local expertise and encourage that local expertise to happen within our department. In computer hardware, we are funding some new computer for the GIS coordinator position that's been proposed. You'll see in the computer software purchases, a large decrease in that line item. We've actually just repurposed that and put it into the software maintenance line item because it's for our Microsoft enterprise agreement. It's not a new purchase we do every year, it's a maintenance item.
Okay.
Also, in our software maintenance, we've added some new software throughout the year for different departments, like the mobile work order system that Mike just mentioned, that we have annual maintenance that we have to pay for in order to get support. The other increase you'll see in our budget is the cost of running our new building. With our new IT building, there's water, sewer, electrical costs that are built into the budget.
With new technology, what do you see as additional savings?
For this coming year, we're, this year in FY12, we're trying to finish up our pilot program for a virtual desktop infrastructure. So what we're doing is, instead of buying a new PC every four, five, six years as they fail, we're going to a virtualized environment. We estimate that we're going to see savings with this whole different architecture of probably $40,000 to $50,000 a year, if not more, not just on the hard cost, but also on the soft cost of staff time. With the new system, we have to do an upgrade. If we need to upgrade a department's program, today, we have to go to every computer, take every staff person offline while we do the upgrade, do the server work. With this new architecture, we can do it all overnight, and then when staff comes in the next morning, they're already on the latest program.
Is cloud computing a part of any of that?
It's the same concept, it's just a private cloud instead of a public cloud.
So you're going to everything being centrally hosted out of your server farm, and then you'll have less expensive, less complicated desktop systems that'll interface with that?
Correct.
Okay.
The next layer to that would be some additional enhancements to our primary servers that would allow him to implement some software and some hardware components that utilize more of the memory and the capacity within those servers, because, you want to describe that a little bit as a phase two of this?
Sure, and we're doing some of this today as well as our server virtualization. So we started this a couple of years ago. Right now, when you buy a new server for a specific application, you may spend $5,000 to $10,000 on a piece of equipment, and if you look at the utilization of that server, you have to plan for the peak times. So you have to plan for that 100% capacity when everybody needs that resource all at once, but realistically, we use 5% to 10% of the resources on there. By virtualizing it, what we'll do is we'll be able to have on one physical, you know, $10,000 server, maybe anywhere from five to 15 smaller virtual servers that share that load. At one point in time, all those virtual servers won't need all the resources, but we can plan for when two of them need maximum resources, they have those maximum resources available to them. It also allows us to create redundancies. So within this virtual environment, if we wanted, if we have a critical system like the police department system, our dispatch, that system has to be available all the time for dispatch and public safety operations. When we get to a fully virtualized environment, if that one server fails, everything will automatically move over to another server seamlessly. It can happen two o'clock in the morning with no staff interaction. Dispatch doesn't notice any issues, it's all taken care of on the backend. Today, if that server fails, we're down for at least several hours while we diagnose the problem, we find hardware parts, we get them shipped here, and get everything put in.
So you're going to a tandem system?
Of sorts, yes, sir.
Okay.
Travis, what's the certification pay? That's essentially an incentive or a bonus to increase your levels of. Increase the skill sets. Skill sets? Yes, sir. We have, technology changes so rapidly. For different levels of staff, there's different certifications that we'd like to have them achieve. For our frontline staff, there's one called an A-plus certification, it's kind of an entry certification that lets you know all about the internal components of hardware, software, of your Windows operating system, that allows them to better diagnose and fix issues. When you get up to our systems administrators, there's certifications for our network equipment. Our Cisco network equipment is very specialized, and it takes a very skilled hand to do it, and so we're encouraging one of our systems admins to become certified in that. The other one is the, our virtualization environment. It's called VMware, and there's some certifications that will allow us that expertise in-house instead of contracting that out with other folks.
Great.
With the new virtual environment and the rigging engineering of the hardware, are you eliminating USB ports?
No, sir.
Not?
No, sir. We'll maintain USB ports, and in our testing, the devices that we're using, we can even add USB hubs down the road if we need more. I believe we have four by default, and we can add hubs to it. Thank you.
Municipal court?
On the municipal court side, the primary adjustments that we've made is to our salary and wages and the personnel. We were actually able to gain back a full-time clerk, and so that has some impact on our personnel line items. We also, in January, took over the magistration program, where our judges are now magistrating every fifth week, and in addition to that, we've gained another docket because of some of the items that they have to magistrate. We have additional dockets where the judge have to preside over what they've issued when they are in their magistrating duties. For the most part, the rest of our budget has remained the same. We have actually defrayed some of our costs by $1,700 by pulling some money out of our security fund, for our registration fees for our clerks and our judges to attend conferences. We've also looked at defraying some of our alarm fees that are associated by pulling it out of our security fund. And then as well, we have used our judicial fee to try to pay for a certified interpreter in, if we have that need arise, we'll be able to use those funds as well. So we've tried to go back and look at what we have available that are just structured for municipal court with the technology fee and the security fees, and try to apply that back towards the budget to try to help defray some of those costs.
I've got a question, Mike. It's probably for Mike, but maybe for you.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the city attorney's budget, there was some language for prosecution in municipal court, so can you explain how those two intermingle?
Well, my assistant, Heather Stebbins, is over in municipal court approximately two days a week, and so, you know, what we've tried to do is show that the time that she spends over there, the time that she spends here doing municipal court work, because we've split my department into kind of general counsel activities and then prosecution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought that was the situation, but I just needed clarification.
Anyone else?
I remember in visiting with you last year and sometimes before, the workload that you had in processing, and there was a need for an FTE, but was that also brought upon by the change in the administration, the city judges entering that rotation?
Yes.
Was that a main part of it, or just a?
It was a fair amount of component of that. When we took over the magistration, we really didn't have any idea how much of a workload we were going to have increase, and I can assure you, there's at least on my part, an extra eight hours a week during that fifth week, where I have to go in and log everything that they do, and then I have to, if we have an emergency protective order, we have to notify all of the entities that are involved. So there's, it wasn't just so much the judges, but the impact of the paperwork that's associated with what they do as well.
So it has been significant, or at least a conservative.
It has impacted.
Okay.
Yes, but what their full-time employment projecting that we'll be able to move forward and not go with the backlog that we have beforehand.
Well, we made that decision, and it seemed, you know, we were kind of guessing somewhat at the impact it would have, and sometimes you look at it in hindsight, but at least get to know the consequences of what we accepted and chose to do.
Yes, sir. My 60-hour weeks are going down, so I'm excited.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do have one last question on municipal court. Where are the fees and fines that are collected through that process accounted for, and where do they go?
They come into the general fund as a certain, as a general rule, but there are other additional fines that we collect that actually go into special funds that are specific to very things like Susan had mentioned, using court technology and some funds like that that go to help offset, but they're specific to specific points, but.
Right.
So those do partially offset some of these expenses that we're seeing here?
They do, they do. They don't cover nearly all the cost it takes to cover court.
Exactly.
And then when you roll in all the patrol and the police time it takes to do all this, it's a fraction.
How much of those funds go to the state?
Probably easily, at least half of every dollar we collect, we give to the state. You know, for example, and there's some gross examples, and I do mean gross, you know, if we stop somebody for speeding and they opt to take defensive driving, you know, there's $25, I think, that stays here with the city, and the rest goes on to the state. So you may pay a $220 fine, and very little of it stays here.
Is there any ability to increase those fees and fines to increase the amount that stays here?
The state, that's one of those unfunded mandates that we're basically becoming a collection agency in court for the state, but if you don't enforce the laws, then you have to do that.
Right.
So basically, if I'm racing down River Hill Boulevard and I get a ticket, most of that goes to the state.
They're going to get a big chunk of it.
They will.
A big chunk of it.
One other question I had about citations issued for watering violations.
Yes, sir.
Was that a significant impact during the peak of the drought this past year?
Yes, that created a whole extra docket for the court, and we actually dedicated an afternoon. We'd start at 1:30, sometimes we're out of there at 3:00. We've gone as late as 5:00. So it just depends on how many people will actually come in and contest the water violations, and then a lot of people wanted to confer with the judge about the fine amounts. So, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's the thing, I heard some complaints about that, and people had said, there's no way you can be making money off this with the time it's taken, but if you have ordinances and no enforcement, then they're pointless, and you can't get past that fact, but I wanted to hear straight from the source as to how, what impact that really had.
It created a whole docket.
Well, and especially on the water restrictions, when we are running out rapidly, we can't not enforce those.
Oh, sure, there's more to it than simply a monetary deal, too.
Right.
And we're anticipating, you know, if we do go back into stage two and stage three, I'd set aside dockets for that particular purpose as well in the next couple of months.
And that affects us on the utility fund side and enforcement, where we may be there on overtime and other things, patrolling and doing that, so there's a whole nother hidden cost associated with enforcing the watering restrictions as well.
Most money lost to not selling as much water.
Correct, it's.
Hits us from all sides.
Correct, but the whole objective of it is to try to help make sure that we're guarding, safeguarding that supply.
Sure, but it's worth the public knowing that we don't want water restrictions any more than anybody, but it's an unfortunate fact of life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parks?
For the Parks and Recreation Department, next year, we're continuing.
For the Parks and Recreation Department, next year, we're continuing with efficiencies based on adjustments for a growing system. We're jumping from 65 maintained ground sites to 68 and from 30 buildings to 33 buildings. The Parks Department also handles custodial and building repair for all city buildings. So with that, we are looking at ways where we can get the manpower out, but not necessarily increase staffing. We're, we have been one of the few departments that hasn't budgeted very much for overtime. So in order to be a lot more efficient, we're going to be plowing some money back into overtime this year for the same number of personnel. The problem with us in overtime is when you create comp time like we do now, where people who work, they get time and a half off. They need to use it within a certain amount of time. And that just burdens our problem further because it's in the summertime. So, we accrue it in the summer and then they have to take it off in the summer. So we're just kind of getting behind the eight ball further and further. So overtime is not only a morale builder, but it's also a deficiency issue for us substantially. We have made some adjustments in some line items because of some equipment we purchased the last 12 months. Our equipment and garage costs have gone down because of mowing equipment that's new. We're also going to see some of that go down with some of the newer buildings like the library and IT, City Hall, Development Services. Those buildings have been retrofitted or made new. So those are going to help us with our building maintenance. In recreation, one thing that we made a change to is we've done a joint, completed a joint venture with the YMCA on their summer camp. And that's helped us save some money by not having summer staff. But we're also working with them on letting them utilize some of our facilities and also have a reduced fee for our summer swim program, which is actually increasing revenue because those are folks that necessarily wouldn't have been involved in the past. For the 13 operation at Curville Shroner Park, even though we don't have many changes in operations or in the budget, we're making an adjustment with our site clearing. We're getting inundated with cedar growth. And we're purchasing some shears this year, out of this year's budget for our equipment. And we're going to be going back in. We've been working with Parks and Wildlife Department on areas that are available for cedar removal. And we're going to begin that program next year. So those are the biggest changes for us in Parks Department.
What percentage of cedar versus other vegetation would you estimate?
Just an estimation based on just driving around and looking at it. I'd say that site is at least 50% if not more cedar. And that number has grown substantially probably in the last 10 years. It looks like it might have been cleared maybe 20 years ago in a lot of areas. And those areas will pop back, just like everything else does in this part of the world. If you don't take care of it, it'll come back.
Malcolm, you're, you're losing some personnel in, in park maintenance and then also in recreation. What was the, is there some restructuring there or shifting somewhere else or losing positions?
Our, our only adjustment in park maintenance was just how we calculated the efficiency in that particular area. I'm in that budget and that's not necessarily, I don't think, a fair read on grounds maintenance. When we get into our efficiencies on the personnel count, that carries over to all of our other performance measures. So that, that's the reason that number went down. In recreation, the number went down because we're not doing the summer camp.
Okay.
And the YMCA's taking that totally. But we're letting them utilize our facilities at no cost.
Okay.
Malcolm, you mentioned facilities maintenance being part of your budget. Have you budgeted anything for the sort of mothballing and vacant building maintenance of this building after we move out between the time that we-
We have not. We assumed it would still be needing some level of service. We will carry majority of this budget over to the new building. But the one thing that's different with this building is both IT and Development Services that were in this building now, those are new separate buildings, which just adds to the janitorial and some of the, some of the building maintenance. But because it's new, that's not going to be a problem. It's mostly the janitorial staffing that we have to improve.
Right. But there will be some amount of cost for just maintaining this building even in a vacant state, you know, making sure no vandalisms occur.
The, the thinking is that even though this will be in some kind of reduced condition air, you know, we need to keep the humidity down.
Right.
We're probably going to do some series of lighting at night just for security. The new building is going to be much more efficient than this building. So we think there's going to be a trade-off.
Yeah, I noticed that in the construction methods that were used. I'm excited about that.
Justin, the janitorial is carried in the Parks and Recreation budget. The electrical building maintenance is all carried in the 870 budget, which is your general fund.
General operations.
General operations budget. So you'll actually still see a number in the 870 budget for this building as well as the new City Hall. Malcolm carries again just the janitorial for the building.
Right. I'm just thinking, you know, if somebody throws a breakthrough window or something, we're still going to have to get that fixed.
Those would be taken care of out of 870.
Okay.
He would be able to do that and then carry that cost over to the 870 budget.
Okay. So the three additional buildings would be City Hall and what else?
IT and Development Services.
Those, okay.
And then this year, we added the expanded library. So-
Okay. But then, any kind of maintenance of the, the parking garage and structure or Peterson Plaza or anything along those lines, that's going to be carried under the 870?
Right. It'll take, it'll take our staff. We've treated that more as a grounds maintenance site rather than a building site. So the Mother's Love statue, the River Trail and the garage will increase in the area of grounds maintenance.
Okay.
We think there's going to be a net of about $15,000 to $20,000 impact to the budget that we'll have to accommodate in here.
Well, I saw that and it was, it said it was related to the parking garage, but really that's parking garage, Mother's Love, Peterson, everything that's coming online that's new.
Right.
Okay.
That's great.
And does it consider also River Trail, Package A?
Yes. Well, from our, from our end, it does, yes.
For, and the, within the 870 budget?
No. Yeah, I'm talking about in our, in our department budget, we've accounted for Package A.
Okay.
Malcolm, as far as the cedar removal in Curville Shroner Park, is there any way that you could get a group of volunteers to take that on?
Well, we, we've got a pretty good corps that do mountain biking out there. And they've offered and have done some of that with us. What the shears will do will automate that. A lot of it's just been hand clearing and that takes forever. The big key for us with Curville Shroner Park is some of that is potential endangered species habitat. So Texas Parks and Wildlife Department got us a map knowing that we were going to do this and showed the areas we need not clear, but the rest of the property, we can begin some clearing.
Because I know my husband wouldn't mind getting in there when he was-
He's, we'll sign him up right now. How about the rest of the family? Can we sign them?
No, just my husband.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I got one question on page 46. You had an actual and then you had an estimate for the end of the year that don't coincide. 266 versus zero on-
Which line is that? I'm sorry.
It's on, 266 and a zero.
Zero.
It's a swimming pool. It's salaries and wages on swimming pool.
Okay. Looks like you have, we can check on that and get back to you.
Okay.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ready for the police?
Hook them up.
All right, counsel, if you take a look at our budget, we've got a slight increase between FY 12 and FY 13. Most of that is, is a result of the 2.75% in the salary increases. A couple of other significant areas is our overtime budget. We've increased our overtime budget to meet the needs of some of the functions that occur in the city, whether it's the Fourth on the River or the triathlon that we're having here. So we, that we can staff that with the appropriate number of personnel. We've had some slight increases in our software maintenance agreements. We've added a piece of equipment here and there that also pass us with maintaining those, maintaining those pieces of gear. For the most part, when you look at our budget between last year and this year, there's a pretty slight increase. We'll maintain the same level of services we had last year with, with the same number of personnel that we had last year. I'll be even more than glad to answer any questions.
Hey, chief, could you kind of review with us a little bit what your, the condition that your current staffing levels are? For example, on your traffic division, we've gone to 10-hour versus a 12-hour.
Right. We, we've, well, not just our, not just the traffic division, but we've done that over in the, in our patrol side. As a result of our staffing numbers, one time, at least once during the process of the year, we were down seven positions. That was four vacant positions and three people that were on light duty as a result of injuries. We also have two people that are, are in the military. One of them is currently deployed. It's a supervisor. He'll be deployed for approximately a year. So we'll be short of a supervisor. So in order to offset, what we've done is we've taken a couple of our, our shifts and we've made them, instead of 12-hour shift, we've pushed them back to 10-hour shifts to offset, at least to meet the needs that we have during those critical hours. So we make some adjustments here and there. We're hoping that we only have to do that for six to eight months. We have two new people coming on board. One started yesterday. We'll have one start on the 16th. That still leaves us two vacancies. We still have a couple of people on light duty. So although you see our staffing numbers sometimes for patrol, maybe 29 people, on any given day, we're liable to be down to 25, 24, depending on the status of, of those personnel. So we try to offset it with the way we manage our schedules so that we can still fulfill the requirements that we have during the busy hours. We've got two positions that are currently, three positions that are currently not funded. Two patrol positions and one investigative position that are not funded through our budget that they haven't been funded the last two years, I think, Todd.
That's right. And one of the things that the chief had implemented, really before I got here, probably what, almost four years ago now, was a 12-hour shift. And that is the most efficient shifting construct that you can create on, particularly on the patrol side. And that probably is about a 20% over the, a month, typical month of salary savings because basically you're eliminating through shift overlap and the need for overtime personnel expense. So-
Well, we do have a shift overlap. We run a shift, we run shift 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And then we're running a 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM shift so that our busiest times of the day are anywhere between 5:00 in the afternoon and probably about 1:00 in the morning. So we have an additional staffing level there, more boots on the ground, so to speak, during those busy hours. So-
That 12-hour shift, is that a 4-3-3-4 or is it some other?
It's, it, there's, there's several combinations. They, they work, they'll work three, or they'll work four, they'll work three. It just depends on which rotation they're in.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, I just wanted to congratulate you on the citizens patrol program that you do. I didn't realize that not only do those people, you know, help out with safety and issues like that, but they also volunteer their administrative time in the police office.
That's correct. They're kind of like a force multiplier for us, particularly during those events that we have, like the Fourth of July. We had several of them in the park on, on golf carts. We use them for the holiday parade. We also staff our walk-up window or reception area with volunteers. A couple of years ago, we had one, we had two part-time positions that we paid to fill that slot. And when we had to eliminate those, they stepped up and they offset that. And it's important, just like it's going to be important at the city, that when people come into a building, that they see a face. They don't push a button and talk on the phone. I think that's important for, for us too. And that's why we have those, them staff there. And they, they do a wonderful job for us. And as soon as we can get them trained to do the Citizens on Patrol program, that'll offset some of our issues with the handicap parking issues that we have in town. And then hopefully morph that into looking at other parking issues or other issues that can offset some of the things that our officers do. So-
Awesome.
Yeah. Would you let them know that council really appreciates their-
Will, certainly.
Absolutely.
-their time.
Also want to compliment the Junior Police Academy. Great program. Encourage you to continue it.
We'll continue as long as we have a place to do it. That, that's another program that was, it's their second year, or is it third?
Third.
Third year that they've, they've done that. And the kids really enjoy it. I think the officers that participated in that enjoy it. And hopefully, we're making an impact with those young men and women that, that come through there. So-
I think you're not only making an impact with the young men and women, you're making an impact with their parents.
Glad to hear that. Thank you very much.
Chief, on building maintenance, you got $17,000. That's just fixing repairs and odd ends.
That's fixing an old building.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I wanted, I'm looking at what, what kind of things that you are doing. And if you see a need, you know, we talk about capital improvement and whatnot.
Well, at some point in time, we're going to have to replace the roof. We're going to probably have to replace the air conditioning system in it. We've got several units on the, on the roof and several of them are 20 years old. So we try, a lot of times, it's just duct tape and, and things like that to get it done. We had an air conditioner fail here about two weeks ago. And fortunately, we, fortunately with the vendor that we had, they were able to fix it in-house as opposed to having to buy a new couple of pieces of, for the unit that would have increased our cost. Most of it's just the lighting maintenance, the lighting systems we have in there are all being replaced. When those ballasts go out, I guess it's Parks and Fix replaces those. We've had some door locks that have malfunctioned. But the roof is something, I think it was three years ago, we got an estimate on, on replacing the roof. And I don't think that estimate's going to be very good. So, I think it was about $60,000 to replace that roof up there. And that wasn't counting any of the issues we have with catastrophic failures with our air conditioning. Part of that building has to be air conditioned all the time. And that's the, that's the part where we have the 911 center, where all of their computers are. That has to maintain an appropriate temperature. Otherwise, the system can fail. So those are some of the critical things. We have some needs to seal the parking lots, some needs to stripe the parking lot, things of that nature that we've been pushing off year after year because of the way, where our budget sits. So-
And the, the key, the key items in that line item are monthly maintenance for the elevator, which is $2,640 a year. Air conditioner and heater maintenance is $7,200 a year. And then $3,500 a year is electrical and plumbing maintenance. So-
I think it's fair to say, though, 20-year air conditioners, that it's going to be hard to find parts from here on.
Yeah.
Well, they do a pretty good job.
You better know those things fall apart.
But we've, we've been, we've been pretty fortunate. So, or lucky, I guess, as you can, you can put it. But it's just a-
Parts come out of that year.
They're going to fail and 17,000 is, I don't think, quite enough if, if we'd get a failure like that. We're going to have to look for other ways to, to take care of that.
Well, and that's honestly, some of the issues that I hear about on occasion, I'm surprised it's only $17,000. You know, and Todd, that's something I'd like to see if we can put in, add that to the CIP list of some kind of planning in the future for improvements. Because it's just, it's kind of where, we've been kicking the can down the road for a long time. And there's issues there, not just with, with funds that are expended to maintain an old building, but, but also with, with security and safety and morale of the personnel as well, police force.
We've done a major remodel on that three years ago. We had some funding that was available that we did remodel. When the courts moved over to their new building, we took over the court building and moved a lot of things around. But that building is cut up so difficultly, it doesn't give us a whole lot of room for expansion, so to speak. I mean, it fits our needs right now. We have very little locker, we have locker room space, but we have no space where officers can take a shower, come into work, put on a uniform, go, go to work, come back home, put their uniform. We don't have a locker room. And that would, certainly would benefit. So they're driving to and fro and working their, in their gear. You know, obviously, that building's about 12,000 square feet, I think. And I think we'd probably need a little bit more so that we had a decent locker room. We got two showers in the men's locker room, I think, one in the women's locker room. Very, very small, not enough to accommodate all of the personnel that we have. But, you know, we're getting by with what we have. So-
You know, looking at the critical systems, you mentioned the air conditioning in the 911 operations area. Are there any grants that are available to assist with, you know, upgrading or replacing those critical systems that, that are really public safety related?
We'll, we'll research that.
I know there's all kinds of other Homeland Security grants. I didn't know if there was anything like that available or not.
Most of the grants that we've seen come out of Homeland Security are not for facilities. Most of those are for technology. And Captain Wenling- Most of those are for technology. And Captain Wenling handles most of our, our grant process. And if that money's out there and available for something, he'll find it. We just have not had, we, when we found a lot of money for grants, we've gotten well over a million dollars in grants over the last four or five years for different things. And, but I, we've not seen anything for facilities.
Okay.
Most of it's personnel, technology. And it's got, with homeland security, it's, a lot of it's being regionalized now. Your grant has to fall into some regional aspect. Police fire for that regionalized type of disaster that you have, whether it's a terrorist or whether it's a natural disaster. So.
Okay. I was just at an ACOG meeting last week, and we got a grant. You want to talk about it there?
I was talking about the CJ grant.
So many grants out there. I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Fifty-six thousand.
Pardon me?
It's the 56,000 that was just awarded through ACOG.
Part of, for the radios?
Yes.
Yeah. We've, we picked, that's something that continually has to be upgraded. We're P25 compliant, which means we're, we're meeting the requirements that the federal government has instituted. But when you go to, you go to different generations, they're trying to determine whether or not, how this whole area is going to be interconnected, that interoperability between San Antonio as it moves out west, or how San Antonio moves southwest and out toward Bernie and Fredericburg. And we got, I think it was 56 to purchase some new radios that will replace some of the ones that we have. So.
Good.
And seems like we're buying radios all the time.
I think we're coming out with a news release or haven't done it yet?
Yeah.
I think we've put it together yet.
Yeah. And those press releases normally will come out of our community affairs office in the PD.
Okay.
And normally what happens is one, once we get the letter from them saying that we've officially awarded it, that's when we, we will do that. A lot of the times we'll get a verbal, yeah, we're going to get this grant. But until that paperwork comes through, we don't like to, because we never know where that money's maybe diverted someplace else.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council proposed FY13 budget allows for fire departments to have the ability to ensure adequate resources in order to maintain much of our emergency core services to address the safety needs of the citizens as well as our firefighters. Like the other departments, the primary increase in our budget was due to salary increases, with the fire department being the largest department within this organization, having 78 personnel. You can see that that would be a significant increase in, in our budget. Areas that we struggle with are certainly the maintenance and repair of our fire apparatus as well as our facilities. As these apparatus age, then certainly they're in much need of repair and maintenance. And so that's some of the areas that we struggle with. Another area, of course, is the maintenance and repair of our facilities themselves. As, as they too age, then so do their, the needs to address those facilities. Must understand that these facilities are used on a 24-hour basis. So where a typical city facility is used about 2,500 hours in a year, a fire department facility, a fire station in particular, is used about 8,800 hours per year. So you can see that, just that, that normal use of a fire station requires that maintenance. In the area of, in the EMS area, we've had some increase in medical supply costs, the training of our paramedics in order to maintain our MICU categorization of our EMS service. We've had some turnover with the paramedics leaving Kerrville in order to pursue higher-paying jobs in other cities. So we struggle each and every year with the cost associated with training our paramedics. And that training is ongoing. And when we train a paramedic, it takes literally about nine months. And so in order to, to be able to train that individual and, in order to send them, we need to pay overtime for others to serve in their, in their capacity. And so therefore that increases the cost associated with that. This year, we took an option to remount one of our ambulances instead of purchasing a brand-new ambulance. That resulted in a savings of about $48,000. And that savings was used in order to purchase one-time capital equipment that, that was very, in much need of being replaced. In, as far as the fire marshals area, the only significant increase was of course the salary increases. But then we added a, the city manager added a fire inspector's position this past January. So we have the full year expense of that particular position. And that position was implemented in order to address inspections of buildings in Kerrville that had not been inspected in a number of years. And so we needed to concentrate on that. But other than that, that's the, the significant increases in the fire department budget were, of course, in, in personnel being the largest department within the organization.
Could you address the certification pay?
Yes, sir.
There was a significant increase in that, and in fact, it was doubled.
Well, we had, we had some shifting in, in certification pay. Each year, we, we try to get the true cost of providing EMS service. So we shift personnel from the fireside to the EMS side or vice versa in order to have a specific, be able to address the specific costs associated with either the fire service or the EMS service. So some of that certification pay may have been the result of shifting of personnel. But firefighters receive certification pay for their level of certification from the Texas depart, the Texas, the Fire Protection Association. And so based on whether they have a basic, intermediate, master certification or advanced certification, then a certain amount of pay goes with that type of certification. And then if the individual is certified as a basic EMT or paramedic, then they receive certification pay for that as well.
Okay. Thank you. I, I want to, I noticed that a lot of the line items, significant decreases as well. So I'm looking at both.
Well, we've, we've shifted some costs associated in order to address the maintenance of, of our vehicles as well as, as our, our facilities. For instance, currently we're about 75% of the budget year, and we're at about 93% of use of our repair and maintenance line for fire facilities. So you can see that we're having to concentrate a lot on our facilities in order to maintain those.
Chief, it's been mentioned, you know, in future capital planning, the possible purchase of a new fire engine. Can you tell me about what the useful life expectancy of one of those apparatuses is?
Well, in, in particular, what we're talking about is the purchase of a new ladder truck.
Okay.
That particular ladder truck that we have was, was built in, I believe, 89. So it's approaching 23 years of service. NFPA does not recommend you utilize a, a fire apparatus in a, as a frontline apparatus for more than 15 years.
Okay.
And then to, to use it only in a, in a reserve capacity up to 25 years. And then after 25 years, they don't recommend that you utilize that particular vehicle at all. So we're approaching 23 years of use of that ladder truck. And so it has been in capital improvements program for a number of years now. And it just keeps getting pushed back and back and further back. And so it's something that really needs to be addressed within the next couple of years.
Is that something that has resale value either to volunteer fire department or other cities?
It doesn't have resale value. Certainly a volunteer department would love to take it over. But our anticipation would be to actually keep that apparatus and use it as a reserve for approximately two or three more years after we receive a new apparatus. Because we don't have a reserve apparatus for that particular ladder truck.
Yeah. For example, it, it was sent to Bandera when they had their major fire a few weeks ago. And it really was key in preserving as much of downtown Bandera as there was.
I received several calls thanking us for allowing that vehicle to go to Bandera in order to assist with their operations of a large, I think it was a three-story hotel that caught on fire. It was vacant, but certainly the surrounding buildings were in imminent danger. But due to the use of the ladder truck, it significantly stopped that fire from spreading to other buildings.
But I guess part of the issue is if we had, if had a major fire here while that vehicle was in Bandera, then we would have been left somewhat unprotected while it was on the way back.
That's the chance that you take. Now, the old, the older type of vehicles like this, your concern primarily is reliability as to, you know, it worked yesterday, but certainly at, at that age, then you can't be assured that it'll work today. So that's, that would be the concern.
Okay.
My compliments to you and, and all the firemen for the well, well demonstrated service that you provide our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. I'll pass that on to our personnel.
I'm, I'm still very concerned about Central Fire Station. Because we, we talk about that every year, about how awful it is and how y'all need a new fire station there.
Yes, ma'am.
And yet we never, we never do anything with that.
It was built in 1975.
1975. Do y'all have a feeling about that? I mean, this is my third year.
I mean, if it's, if it's inadequate, we obviously need to look at doing what it takes to make it adequate.
It needs to be rebuilt. I mean, it's inadequate.
Yeah. I mean, you know, anecdotally, I've been told that it was actually inadequate the day it was placed in service. I don't know if that's correct or not, but.
It could likely have been.
If it is now, then, yeah, we need to look.
We're, we're currently parking vehicles outside. There's no storage facility. So we've added stored sheds. And now the sheds are getting to play, to the point where they need to be replaced as well. And so it's just a, a rolling program of getting that facility all in order.
And then keep, I mean, keep, and I'm sorry too, in, on the fireside, about 50% of our call volume is handled directly or indirectly through Central. So it's, it is the linchpin to a lot of what we do, emergency safety, fire-wise.
Yeah. They have the CABS pumper. So therefore, they're utilizing virtually every structured fire within the city limits of Kerrville because of that capability.
I mean, I don't, I hate to talk about borrowing money, but is that something that we could borrow money to, to build a new fire station? Could you run some numbers on that?
Well, we did our facility study back in '08, I think it was. And the number was 4.3 million that was included into the budget. Now, that includes a new fire admin facility as well. We're renting in a strip center over off Coronado right now for fire admin. So.
And emergency operations center as well.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, we're, and the facility is also the smallest square footage fire station that we have on, in service as well. So it's, it handles the largest call volume. It's the smallest facility. It's not adequate to house. Plus, we're renting space right now for fire admin and emergency medical, emergency operations.
Yeah. We have six vehicles running out of that facility and only room for four in the main fire station. So.
I'd really like to see something done about that, you know, instead of talking about it every year.
I agree.
Run some numbers.
I mean, I, I too hate to take on additional debt, but, you know, public safety is one of the main reasons why city government exists. And so we need to be sure and ensure that. And quite frankly, if we do have to take on additional debt, I'd rather do it now while rates are still low.
Yeah. And I think my question is that I'd advise them to go visit Central Fire Station.
Yeah.
It is historically significant. The tile's been there for a long time.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
We've been in session two and a half hours. Want to take a recess?
We can take five minutes.
Yeah, five minutes. Run recess for five minutes. We'll be back in a half hour. Council is coming back to order at 11:30 AM after a five-minute recess. I believe next up is development services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Basically, over the last year, our departments went through a pretty major restructure. We had the department head and the division manager for co-compliance lead. So there's a significant difference in the numbers on our budget with the move. We also, our administrative assistants are providing those duties for engineering also at this point in time in the same building. Basically, making sure we have redundancy in inspectors and inspections so that we can, 28 hours.
I don't have, do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A car allowance reinstated, a cell phone for our Main Street manager. The former managers have been using their own phones and felt like that it was time to put that back into the budget. And of course, then, our salary adjustment. As with any new employee, especially at that level, executive team level, there is some training that is budgeted for that position by our letter of agreement with the state of Texas for our Main Street program. This position is required to attend two, two out of four trainings a, a year. The first year ramp-up is a little bit different in the respect that, that most of the time, they go to three out of the four just to be well-schooled and well-trained on their craft. The other area that our increases, you can see there are special events and special projects. Moving out of our building, which our, our office has, in our 18 years of existence, has, has not been a city hall. We have been in a, at first, we were in a office setting at One Trironer Center. And then we've been in the building we're in now since 1998. We will be with the city hall opening and Peterson Plaza opening. We have planned some programming changes, increases, if you will, for things that we've not had the funds to, to do. And the emphasis on downtown, we have budgeted for those. Promotional items, we have pretty much dwindled them down to nothing. Collateral materials, those type of things. Events that, that are beyond our regular annual events that is in the Main Street department. So those are our, our increases that we have looked at. Some of the hardcore, hard costs, streetscape, we have, we're looking at to helping our little tired tree wells, our lamp posts, Christmas lighting, that type of thing, which is just nominal fees in there. But it's very important in a, in a, in a, very much a public, a public viewing. We have, with the changing of community affairs from business programs, obviously we'll have a few, we'll have a few expenses with the name changes and so forth. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are you seeing any program changes or mission changes along with your name change? I guess what facilitated the name change?
To better serve our, our mission, as I, as I said, the city manager and I visited about what the three divisions that we have in now community affairs. Ramping up our social media, our traditional media, our public affairs, which is a little bit different than public, public relations. Again, because of our new building, our new thrust, if you will, to promote Kerrville, now that we're doing a little bit better on our budgeting, our, our tax receipts. We've been really very conservative on, on our spending and our attending and, and helping our, our business partners and our nonprofit partners. That is the primary reason, you know, for that, to better identify us as, as the community go-to people. That's, that's my two cents. The, the city manager might like to add his.
Well, and, you know, a common question a lot of times is, you know, business programs, you know, why are they participating or why are they engaged in certain activities? And so what, what Mindy and Misty really do is really more community affairs. They are an entry point for economic development, and they facilitate the ED GO team. Of course, we have all the functions that center around Main Street and that program. In addition to that, we've got the other operational things that we do. Mindy's our, our point for the media to try to help facilitate media contacts and coordination of public information back out within the community. So the, the change, the name change and the mission identification for the department, I think, is a much better characterization for all the things that we've had business programs actually be responsible for over the period of the last several years.
Yes, sir.
On page 83 under business development, why isn't KEDC mentioned in? Why isn't KEDC mentioned in there as well as...
The, the direct responsibility that this department has is with EIC. We do collaborate with KEDC, but I am not the staff person coordinated with, with that. With that change from KEDF to KEDC, a little bit of a change shifted.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, that really denotes the direct relationship, direct, this position reports directly to the staff support role for EIC, and KEDC's intergovernmental.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the engineering side, our proposed budget reflects a net decrease, slight net decrease from last year's budget. This was primarily from a restructuring that we also went through in first now and all the associated salary compensation costs that go with that. Most of our budget has, has stayed in line with last year's proposed, so we haven't had a whole lot of changes. We have cut some in our office equipment maintenance, hoping to keep things going for another year, but no significant changes beyond that.
Thirty-three dollars isn't much of a good change.
At least it didn't go up.
I don't have any questions. Question? Thank you very much.
Public Works?
Thank you. The ultimate goal of the Street Division is to repave more streets. We'd like to get on a 15-year program where we could repave 10-year, 10 miles per year of streets. This year, we, the things that you'll note that are helping, helping us to get one step closer to that goal is, number one, to restructure, reorganize, and pay for, give, give reclassifications to various positions. The other, we've added 20% to the material budget. We're up to $600,000, which we should be able to pave somewhere between four and six miles. If it was just residential streets only, we could get six miles done with that. It's about $100,000 a mile to repave, to do an overlay on, on a residential street. But when we get into our collector streets, we have to go with a thicker cross-section, and if we're reconstructing the street, we have to tear it out all the way down to the base, so it's more expensive. We anticipate somewhere around four miles next year with $600,000 between both the repaving and the overlay. And you'll also see a change in, in our capital. We've got the motor grader in there for $103,000.
So, Charlie, it says that $600,000 of the actual pavement manage, management system budget is just for materials, so that balances labor and equipment.
Labor, equipment, and so forth, yes, sir.
Okay. So, so tell me a little bit, just kind of in a general sense, where we were going back to last year and the previous few years and, and where we are now. I realize that we're still short of where we want to be in terms of funding levels to get to a 15-year cycle, but, you know, we've got the Calo grant that allowed purchase of material, I mean, of equipment. That freed up funds from what we were renting or leasing, and then we're self-performing with our own crews work and putting a lot more street repair, new streets in place for the same dollars. And then additionally, the motor grader purchase, can you give us a comparison where we were maybe a few years ago with where we are now?
Yes, sir. And let's go back to 2009 and before, because in those years, we were contracting out any work that we did. And because the, when I got here in 2001, the only kind of street rehabilitation we were doing was chip seal. And chip seal is like repainting a good wooden fence. You go out there every year, you put a good fresh coat of paint on it, and that wooden fence is going to last you a long time. If your wood ever rots, and we've got roads out here that have effectively rotted, the paint doesn't do you any good, and that's what, what a chip seal does. You have to rework the whole base, and then you can put a chip seal over the top. But what we're doing now in, in 2000, starting in 2010 and 11, those were our first two years that we cut our, we're actually rebuilding roads that are, that need to from the base up, and we're doing it anywhere 50 to 60% of the cost that we would have if we were hiring a tractor. So, there's significant saving. We're able to take that savings and repave more, do more with less. In 2010, we, we spent about $515,000. 130 of that was from the landfill, and that was for rebuilding landfill road. And so, it, it looked good that year that we spent $515,000, but we got to remember 130 of that came from another source. So, we really only spent about 385. In 2011, we spent 350 of general fund on some streets, a little bit of some collector's recon. You remember, we did Hill Country last year. We had to go cross-section, so we spent 150,000 just on that stretch, constructed about three tenths of, of a mile of a road. But we also, we overlaid about a mile on residential and other. Here, we should be overlaying about two miles and reconstructing about two miles, and we're, we're slated to spend about $600,000. $100,000 of that is from the sale of Rodriguez Street. We've not received those funds yet, so when we do, we can, we can do that work. And if, and if that has to bleed over into FY13, we can deal with that when that happens. My preference would be that it happens this summer.
The funds from the sale of Rodriguez Street, are they reflected in this year's budget?
They're reflected in FY12.
12, that was last year's.
Yes, sir. From the budget amendment we did back in January.
Okay.
All right, what is the difference in thickness between an overlay and a reconstruct?
If we reconstruct a residential street, the thickness in the, of the final surface course will be the same, two inches thick. If we reconstruct a collector's street, it may be anywhere from three to four inches thick, and we've, we've gone as thick as six. Depends on the classification of the street. If it's an arterial street, then we're, we're going to need to probably go with six inches thick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Charlie, you've, you've really cut on the hiring out of equipment from $73,000 this year to just $1,000, but then the capital outlay has gone up about the same amount. What's the, was shifting dollars there?
We, we were able to, because of the Calo grant, we purchased a, an asphalt lay-down machine, which normally, we would have spent 50, $10,000 a month, $12,000 a month for four or five months out of the year. So, we saved $50,000 right there, and we also purchased some rollers that we would have spent another $10,000, $20,000 on rentals, and that's also with Calo grant funds. So, those grant funds combined with our match, we matched the amount that we would have spent on rental. It's a one-time expense for us. Now, those, that equipment belongs to us, and we, we won't have to rent it next year. We were spending $60,000 a year just on, on those two or three pieces of equipment.
Okay, so that's why there's a shift. You took it out of rental and put it in a capital outlay.
Now, we're able to put it in, in capital outlay for the, and, and for the years we'll bend the material.
For the capital outlay, that reflects matching for the Calo grant?
The capital outway 13 is strictly for motor grader that we need to purchase.
I see, $103,000.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, to our goal of 15, if we were to fund it today and, and be on a true 15-year program where we were overlaying seven miles a year and reconstructing three miles a year, that would cost us about $1.7 million. And the break-even point with the increased asphalt price of 8% that we just experienced, break-even point, it's about $820,000 a year is what we need to spend just to even, not increase or decrease our management system score, our scoring.
So, we're still losing ground?
We're losing ground. Yes, sir.
We're losing 3.6 versus 10.
Yes. And, and in order for us to do the extra material, we've identified a plan a couple of years ago, and to finalize and get to this 15-year program, we would, we would need to hire additional staff. This year, when we are shorthanded on staff, we, we end up calling on other departments to help us pave. So, we're, we're definitely shorthanded. We could use three today, but, but with three more people, not only could we make a lot of hay now, we, that would get us into that 15-year program. It would be another step towards that. We're not asking for that in this budget, but that's something that we're going to, we're going to keep chugging away every year and ultimately get to that 15-year program.
Suffice to say, the Calo Foundation's been good to Kerrville.
Very, very good.
Absolutely. I don't have any questions.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. The Buttholesworth Memorial Library will see an increase in its budget due to the salary increase of the 2.75% across the board. And then, most of our increases have occurred because of new equipment and new technologies we are bringing into the library. We updated our security system, was 3M RFID system, which allows us to better monitor the items in the library, improve security, and also allows us to move forward with self-checkout in the building, freeing up staff to perform other duties specifically in our library loan, which we've also seen an increase in our line items for that program in postage meter, postage rates, postage meter ink, I'm sorry, fees and then postage rates. Another thing that we instituted was the ebook system through Access 360. There is a yearly maintenance fee associated with that, and then the increase in budget towards purchasing ebooks as well. Finally, we did have a new AC system installed in the building with the renovation. Because we enclosed that children's area, the balcony, and made it into the children's area, we did have to put in a new system for that. And that's where we're seeing the budget increases in, in this year's budget, mainly contractual software agreements and then maintenance fees for the, the RFID and 3M checkout system and the ebooks as well.
You may have said it and I missed it, but what's the, it went from small tools and equipment, went from $500 or $600 in 11 to $27,000 last year, and then back down to $600. What was that purchase?
Those were related to construction costs.
I see, okay. And the library renovations and new items like computer equipment, things like that?
Correct. The security gates were a new system, and then we're looking towards the self-check. There are fees associated with that, both the company providing 3M and then our database system as well.
Okay.
$12,000 decrease in power from last year to this year.
Yes.
I assume is because of the upgrades and new equipment at the library?
Yes, sir. With the new lighting and the new windows, we've moved into energy efficiency, and we're going to see a decrease in the power.
And the roof improvements, too, has a big difference.
I want to thank you for filling in as an interim director. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir. I have a great staff behind me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
This is the Public Works portion of water and sewer. I know that Mike already covered the water sewer fund and the water records. Overall, in the, the utility fund on the operational side, just a, a general note, we've, we've shifted our philosophy in the way that we budget in that, in the years past, we didn't have a healthy fund balance reserve. We've built that up through the years. And so, in, in the past, we've built contingency within the operational fund to give flexibility to the managers to make discretionary decisions, and what we've done this year is we, we've stripped that down to bare bones across the utility fund. If, if need arises, we have a fund balance, and we've got a process in place through our city manager and the finance department to cover issues that arise. So, the budget we've turned in this year truly is very representative of, of what the true operational costs are with, with very, very little fluff. In our water production division, what we accomplished in 2012, so far this year is they've stored 160 million gallons of water, and they, they expect to store, normally, you'd store 130 to 140. They were very aggressive this year due to the drought, and as soon as we started getting those winter rains in December, they got very aggressive with the aquifer storage and recovery to, to gear us up for the next drought. If you'll look at the water production division in general, you're going to see an increase in our electric anticipated costs. We're anticipating a 7% increase, and we also have in our capital, truck replacement, we have a pickup truck with a scheduled replacement at 150,000 miles, and it, it's going to approach that and hit the 150,000 later this year.
Do you have any indication of, of a chart that shows an increase in maintenance cost on something that has 125 to 150 miles on it versus one that doesn't?
I do not. Our garage, the city garage, has been handling that and gives us a schedule. Mike, is that something that you all can produce?
Yes, sir.
I was on page 112. We're going to move on to water reclamation, page 114. Again, in the services, we have an increase in our electrical. That, that is, again, the 7% increase, and under capital, we have a, a dump truck in there that needs to be replaced. The dump truck has 16,000-plus hours right now, and it's normally scheduled for replacement at 12,000 hours. On page 116, or the next page, 115 and so forth, that's our utility construction department. And under capital, we've got a one-ton truck that was described to you all earlier as a capital replacement. That's really the only big-ticket item that you're going to see in there or difference. And our utility construction department, they've consistently hit 95% on responding to customer service calls within 24 hours, and they're 100% on responding to water main leaks. They respond to roughly 2,000, 2,200 calls a year, the service calls, and then the leaks around 225, about 10% of that. They do a really good job there. Our, our water reclamation, I know I just breezed through there very quickly, but on, on page 114, just looking at some of their performance measures, they respond to sanitary sewer overflows, and within 24 hours, they're 100% on that. They've not missed a lick on that. That's very important that they are able to maintain that level of operation as it's mandated by the state. They also have responded to 100% of their customer service calls within 24 hours as well as their SCADA, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition. That's our computer system that monitors our lift stations, lets us know when there's a problem. If that malfunctions, they're Johnny on the spot within 24 hours, making those repairs.
Charlie, I don't think our page numbers are the same as your page numbers, just so that you're aware.
They're 10 off? Okay. I apologize. They're 10 off? Okay. I apologize for that.
Add our...
I think add on our side to get to his. I saw that I wasn't the only one flipping around funny. Thought I'd bring it up.
I apologize for that. And then our laboratory, everything's pretty much clockwork there as far as the budget goes. And we'll move on to our utility administration. Biggest change there, we've added in GIS personnel, as the city manager described to you earlier.
Charlie, what was the, going back to water production?
Yes, sir.
On, just out of curiosity, chemical and medical supply? In 11, it was $94,000 roughly, and then last year we budgeted 150, but you're projecting we'll spend 62. What's the cause of that?
Biggest cause is the amount of water that we produce. Last summer, because of the drought, we produced a whole lot less surface water. The surface water uses the most chemicals, and we're relying on our groundwater system. And so what we've done is, how do you budget for next, you never know what's going to happen. Our budget assumes that we're going to be in stage three. And we looked at historical and came up with a number that we felt comfortable with as far as how much we're going to use. Now, the good thing is, is that in a year that we're using a lot of chemicals on surface water, we're selling a lot of water too. So it's always going to offset with revenue. But if we get into some kind of a bind in the middle of the year, we've got the fund balance, and we've always got tools. We can always have a budget amendment if that happens. We feel comfortable with what we've budgeted, though.
Well, it's like fuel costs too. When you look at the, I forget, I think fire department is $115,000, $120,000 in fuel. If gas jumps to 425 a gallon, that shot, if it falls, then you get a surplus. But you're trying to project something that nobody really knows what it's going to be, and yours is probably even more volatile with the water. But that makes sense, because when you pull the water out of the ASR well, you're adding just basically what, a touch of chlorine and it...
Yes, sir.
You know, goes into the system.
That's correct, and it's pretty much true with our groundwater as well.
On the stage three, what was the timeframe that you budgeted that on?
Our rates are based on that. Our revenue projections are based on that. I'm going to defer to Mike, or Si. Si's here, or Mike can...
Just real quick, as you look back on water and sewer revenues, you'll see years where you might have eight to nine, eight and a half to nine million in revenue. Then you may see other years where you have as much as 10. The decision we've made in doing our revenue estimates is to base it on about the gallons that are sold during a stage three process. And I don't have that exact gallon with me, but that's how we build our spreadsheets on our revenue estimates. And so then, as Charlie mentioned, if we sell, if we have a whole year where we don't have to even go to stage two and sell a lot of water, then we'll just come back with a budget amendment based upon the additional revenue to cover the additional expenditures. But we definitely don't want to build a budget on a $10 million revenue number, then spend the whole year in stage three or stage four and only see about $9 million in revenue come in.
So you planned on all 12 months at stage three?
Yes, yes.
And if you look at this year's revenue projection, we're projected about 8.9 million, and we're on track to hit that 8.9. So just to kind of, and we apply the same philosophy for this year's budget moving forward.
Well, but is there, it seems like last year, we sold a whole lot of water, even though we were in very restrictive stages through a lot of the year. Is there a point in which it's dry and people have to water? And you're using a lot of water, but you're not in such a restrictive stage that you're starting to cut back? Or is it really just when you're selling the most water when there are no restrictions at all?
You know, we've looked at that through the years, and it seems like you sell the most when there's a little bit of restrictions, stage one, stage two, because people will set their timer and they'll water. When you start getting into stage three and four, obviously, we cut way back. So I would say, I would say stage one is really, if you're in stage zero, the reason you're in stage zero is it's raining all the time. People just aren't watering. You go to stage one, they, I better go set my timer.
What I'd like to see is a chart that gives revenue and expenses for both water and sewer. Because you have a revenue stream and expense stream for each. That's all I have. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Would you like to?
So if we can run down maybe these direction questions and see what additional things. One additional question for you all in looking at a potential issuance for central station and admin, again, 4.3. We can go back, evaluate what the anticipated range of debt service would be and extrapolate that back to tax rate implication. But the question will come into play with regard to bank qualified issuance. We're capped at 10 million, and so we've got 11 million over two years on the CIP for the utility side. So it kind of goes back, if we're looking at a 10 million issuance for 2013, then you're looking at the potential to be able to sell the other 4.3 in 2014. And so what you may look at is some interim design work and some other things that would occur, maybe sequenced into that somehow. So I guess, long story short, is yeah, if you do the seven and the 4.3, then you've got clear in 2014 to issue. Or if you want to sell in this year for fire station, then you've got to back off if you want to stay bank qualified. There's probably about 50 basis points difference between bank qualified and non-bank qualified. So if we exceed the 10 million, you know, there'd be about 50 basis points of additional interest rate that could implement. It could be a little bit higher than that. But anyway, so those are strategically, I think, what you're realistically looking at is an issuance that would probably need to coincide with the 2014 issuance to stay on track with the utility fund CIP if we're still there and trying to get that scope of work done on the utility side. So that's a long, convoluted story, I know. So I think knee-jerk, right now, you're probably looking about 2014 to probably sell and be funded, I guess is really what I'm trying to get to at the end of the day.
Todd, what does that do to your sustainability analysis?
Well, you're going to have to raise taxes, and I think you're going to probably raise taxes between two and a half to three cents to cover the debt service for the construction, assuming you issue 4.3. Because you're going to have to sell 4.3, then you're also have to have some additional amount of funds for some other FF and E, and then there's some additional design costs that may be eligible to roll back into that as well.
So two to three cents on the tax rate for, just for the 4.3 on the fire station? And that's not considering any other things? Is the funding for the ladder truck, is that already, there's no, nothing outlaid for that at all? It's just floating out there?
Yeah, that's going to be about another 1.2 or 1.3 for the purchase of the ladder truck.
So that would probably be another cent?
Probably so. So if you fund it all with that, if you find other ways, and we'll look at other ways maybe to bring cash in to do some other things with that. So we'll range those options. But if you anticipate a full debt service load to cover just the station, probably two and a half to three cents. And then if you add the fire truck, it's probably another penny or so to cover that on a 20-year basis.
Well, come 2014, we're going to have to do that ladder truck. It's going to be coming on 25 years.
We're really already past the frontline recommendation anyway. I mean, I think if we're looking at an issuance, we might as well include it.
Just, he can develop the numbers and show us.
We'll look at it. We'll look at what some potentials may be to bring maybe some cash. Maybe over a three-year period, you begin some set-asides, maybe for the equipment purchase. So although you may go beyond the 25, you're starting to build towards a capital replacement number. So we'll look at options of how we can bring cash to bear and what the overall implications would be, you know, to any and all of that, so.
Well, the other thing I'd like to hear a little bit about, we've had, you know, some considerable conversation on the utility side and long-term CIP. You know, to the extent we even talked, I guess, last fall about what portion was going to be debt issuance, what point, you know, what portion rate increase, where EIC fell into that and whatnot. But I'd like to hear about those projects that were further down the list in priority and, you know, where, just how that fits in with staff's view on prioritization versus the general fund side of issues with the fire station, ladder truck, even improvements to the police station.
And also, staff would include, hopefully, a priority on each item.
One of the things too, on the CIP side, you know, again, this is predicated on us sticking exactly to the program we'd already established for the utility fund. We're waiting to get some final return numbers on the wastewater treatment plant study. So there may be some projects that we push out on the utility side, project-wise, to bring forward. So dollars are running about the same, but there may be some re-racking to that that we'll bring back to you here in our discussions moving on into August, so.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me about that. I had conveniently forgotten that part.
Yeah, I'd never forget about it. It seems to be there.
They don't go away. At some point, you know, look, it would be easy to keep just kicking the can down the road, and some future council staff, whatnot, can deal with it. But at some point, I mean, we've got to address infrastructure issues, just like we've done with utilities. It hasn't been easy, and there's been, you know, cuts in everything across the board through the budget, trying to improve streets and drainage and utility work improvements. But we're going to have to do the same thing on the, with these issues as well at some point.
Well, the problem is that can's already getting pretty beat up from having been kicked down the road for the last 20 years.
Yeah.
On our spending thresholds, are we in the right targeted range on these major operational funds? Do we need to, do we need to look at any additional cuts or adds?
Well, I mean, look, it's going to go back to, I'll just say it for Gene, since he's not here. He would, he'd appreciate this. I mean, you go to the thing of where would you like to cut? And I think cutting a million and a half dollars from the budget two years prior, you know, it just, it seems like, I just don't see a lot of places where there's a lot of fluff to take out. You could, you could just issue an edict and say, you know, cut 5% out of your, you know, departments, or, you know, especially the ones that take up more heavier, a higher proportion of the cost. But is that realistic? We've already been through that. We're trying to scratch just to get salary adjustments to even stay at the lower tier of other municipalities that we compare ourselves to. I don't see any places to cut and any desire to cut any more than we have. So spending thresholds in departments, I think, are fine. Maintaining the property tax rate, you know, I think for this year and where we are, I'm glad that we're able to do that, particularly with the economy. We all hope that that turns around and changes, and we're able to afford some of these things that we're talking about without tax increases. But it's a hard conversation to have, but we may be there. So my thoughts on the first two, and move on as we need to.
I agree. I think, you know, as far as cutting goes, we're down to, if you cut anything else drastic, we're down to service-level cuts, and what service are we willing to live without? And, you know, it's not streets. We're already behind there. It's not public safety. So it's not enforcement of, you know, traffic laws through the court. So I'm with you. I don't see where else we could really cut and make a drastic difference.
And that would also be, that would also be, excuse me, my car went off. That would also be reflected in some of your options as to what you could do.
Yeah, I mean, if you see something that's obvious that has been overlooked, you know, we can certainly look at it.
We'll keep re-scrubbed. This is, you know, this is a scrubbed version, and we'll take a couple more cuts at it, you know, to kind of keep going. And there's some tweaking that we still need to do on it to kind of bring it online to file document for you. So we'll keep evaluating, but it sounds like we're at about the place where we need to be or can be for what we offer service-wise.
Well, your summary of the two-page letter here, I think, really is the, covers all the main ideas. I couldn't have written it any better of what I have in mind of where we're going. Just sustainability, the five-year financial sustainability model, some salary increases that although more meager than we would like to see are what we're able to fit right now. And it just goes through really kind of the, it's a very good summarization of where, I think, we'd talked about going and where we, where we want to be with the sustainability and with where we are right now financially. So, I'm sorry.
I'd still like to see the city manager get a 2.75 salary increase with everybody else. If that has to come out of maybe our general fund reserve or something like that. I mean, I'd still like to see that.
Thank you.
So on the adjustments, our organization, we're okay there. And I think we've talked about the utility fund debt and fire station, potentially how we'd roll that in. And then, and then I guess, I guess we've probably already answered this question in terms of prioritization, the things that we're doing and how we're building. And again, this is year two reflection of the prioritization and benchmarking program that we installed at the beginning of this fiscal year. So we're evolving and growing along those lines as well, so.
And I agree with Jack that I'd like to see, you know, staff's budget priorities.
Especially on the capital side.
We did that, we went through that practice last year about this time with council's prioritization of all of the different departments and activities and then, and programs versus staff's, and that was a good, a good practice. But I would like to see that done on a CIP side as well, just for some comparison. Because we're not going to be able to do everything. We're going to have to pare it down. But it sounds like there's some willingness to do something, supposed to just pushing it off for future years. It's just, there's things that can't be pushed any further. One other thing I'd like to add is I realized there's no telling the amount of hours that went in to this. As long as it took to read it, I couldn't imagine how long it took to actually put it all together. And the amount of staff time and the attention to detail and everything that went into it. And it's really a phenomenal document to read through. It gives you a great picture of the city and the services that are putting, being put forward. And it's unfortunate that there won't be more citizens that actually look at this and understand I'd say the professional manner in which our city is run, and it's greatly appreciated. So for all of your time that you put into it, from department level program, you know, all the way up to the core team, really appreciate the level of organization and the professionalism which it's carried out, how easy it is to read the performance measures. And I'm sure those are always popular all the way through all of staff. But, you know, it really is organized in a way that you can understand. It makes sense, and it flows. It's consistent from department to department, and it looks very good.
Is this something we could put on the website? It'd be good for the citizens to see.
Yes, what we'll do is when I make my final submission, we'll post that to the website as well so everybody can get a chance to look at that and see. And then we'll make periodic updates. As council may change it, you know, through y'all's deliberation and process there. So, and thank you for those comments. People have worked very hard and so, maybe a few sleepless nights. We even wake everybody up before noon some days, you know, to get them working. We even woke everybody up before noon some days, you know, to get them working. And I will say, those benchmark numbers, those performance indicators are popular with one staff person, and that's probably me. I'm probably the only one who really likes those too much, so. But they've been very important in, I think, for all of us that are outside of a department, even other staff members to read, know what everybody's trying to do. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Okay, Item 4 on the agenda. I mean, item...yeah, Item 4. Report on property owners' meetings and direction to staff regarding final River Trail routing and alignment options.
Mayor and council, at the last meeting we had, our three targeted areas of concern were in the area around G Street, in the area around 534, and then the Guadalupe Street segment to the west of the Riverside Nature Center where Package A is going. We have...a few staff have been in contact and trying to make contact with each of the property owners. We've had communication and discussion with each one of the primary... Those that I would call those not in favor of the project, and had some resolution worked out and some optimism, I think, in working through those particular segments. I will say that many of the property owners had concern about discussing their property in public, and also, the eventual negotiation on their property. So, I'm not sure where we want to go with the rest of this conversation, but I can give you more detail on each individual property if you're interested.
Why don't we hold the...those property owners that wanted confidentialists, hold that for executive session?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd kind of be inclined to hold, really, any discussion of individual property owners into executive session, whether they requested it or not. I think, you know, that being part of a potentially sensitive negotiation regarding real property, that would be a better idea.
Are there any other discussions that we need to have, Malcolm, apart from...
The only other area, and if...Travis, real quickly, under the parks, there's a file in there called River Trail, and then there's photos. If you could go to that...oh, real quickly, let me give you an update on Package A. That's surely something that the public has been interested in. We've had a lot of people trying to get on the property. The contractor has now in full stride on the property. The weather's been good. He has begun the construction of the trail. He's working, basically, from the eastmost part, near the bridges that go up to the library on Tranquilly Island, back to the bridge that's going in. The photos I'm going to show were just taken a couple of days ago, I guess yesterday. When we worked with the contractor on his sequencing, one of the things that we wanted to do was identify from him what he thought was the hardest part of the project. Now, obviously, the bridge is a hard part of the project. But one thing that he's been able to do with the first segments of the trail that's being constructed are some very creative ways to help build the bridge. He's actually using large bags for his cofferdam that's being filled with material coming from the excavation for the trail. And the photographs will show that. Can you find it, Travis? It's a Parks River Trail. It's under the Public Drive, Parks. And then, photos. There we go. The first photo is just an example of the excavation forming and tow downs that are going in. The trail itself is 10 feet wide. The contractor, because of all the cypress trees in this area, we've got a distance where he cannot use trenching equipment. He has to do some hand digging, once we get around some of the larger trees. But these areas, in this location, those are from the top of the surface of the trail down to the bottom of the tow down is 30 inches. So, we've got very deep material. Like most flat work, we've got a base material. In this case, we've got a cushioned sand base. And if we...and if...back in this area, you can see these large bags. These are five cubic yard bags that can be lifted with heavy equipment. And he's utilizing a lot of this excavated material and placing those in the bags. If we go to the next photo. This is just the actual...when the concrete was being laid, all of this trench on both sides, not only is it 30 inches deep, but it's also got full rebar. And then, we've got number 3 and number 4 rebar throughout the construction. And then, the last slide kind of shows you how he's using those bags. This is down at the bridge. It's pedestrian bridge that's being built by Lemus Street, just to the east of Lemus Street. If you're driving across the bridge on Lemus, you can actually see the construction going on. But these are those bags that are going in. This side on the island side, the bags were placed. Fill material was installed. And then, he's...in this case, he's pouring his piers for the bridge. And then, once that area is done, he'll be moving over to this location. Probably, maybe later this week, if not this week, then early next week. So, those are kind of some updates on where he is. He's still expecting September as a completion time.
So, Malcolm, with their hand digging and not cutting through the cypress tree roots, they're still pouring the tow downs and still pouring beams around the roots?
Yes. Yeah. What we're doing is, we've got a small excavator that is going no deeper than 1 foot when we get in about a 20 to 15 to 20-foot distance from a face of a large tree. Our concern are not the small roots. It's the large structural roots. So, if he is to come across anything 3 inches or larger, we're to stop work, which he hasn't done yet. So, so far, so good on that. The other thing that we can show you, I guess, when we have some discussions about property, is what exactly does the trail look like if we were to start at the Nature Center and go to the east to Curville Shonner Park? Because that was some discussion the council had last week in regard to the area on Guadalupe Street being of concern. So, that's kind of the update.
Thank you very much. At this time, council will go into executive session. The City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time to discuss any of the matters listed permitted by law, including if they meet the qualifications, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, and 551-073, deliberation regarding gifts. 5...or...dot 074, Personnel Matters, and 551 dot 076, deliberation regarding security devices, and 551 dot 087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding the matter. We'll be using Section 551, 071 and 072 for the River Trail route and the purchase exchange lease and value of real property. And I want to make sure that includes attorney. Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter executive session under Section 551.071 and 551.072 to discuss the River Trail route and the purchase exchange lease or value of real property.
Okay. Got a motion second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I guess everybody's...everybody's gone. We need to close this door.
It's your call. Well, I was thinking we just had to turn the light off, turn this off.
You're going to have to walk me through this, Brendan, but I think I've got it right. Council's coming out of executive session at 1:17 PM. Let's reflect that council took no action. And there being no further discussion, any discussion? Meeting is hereby adjourned.